Could you guys hear us at all?
Can you guys hear me talk?
No.
One, one.
No.
We're gonna call to speed the order.
You got it.
All right. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act. If everyone would, as is our tradition, we'd like to take a moment of silence, please. Do the next thing that we do is salute the flag. If everybody would stand and in Cumberland's tradition, it's Commissioner Saleo's turn to lead the pledge. Commissioner Saleo, if you would please, sir.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Business Administrator, Ms. Johnson, may I just make a little moment of silence as well, please?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to continue with a moment of silence for a moment.
Okay.
Two years ago, August 26th, 26th, 2021, at the Kabul International Airport, our nation lost 13 brave souls: 11 United States Marines, a fleet Marine Force Navy Corpseman, and a United States Army Soldier. In an act of supreme devotion to mission, they gave their lives so that others may feel the, be free of the oppression under brutal regime. This moment represents not only this anniversary, but the many difficult anniversaries of deadly battles over the course of 20 years related to the global war on terror. Please, let's take one more moment of silence to reflect how this country came together and their memory.
Madam Clerk of Cumberland County, as the county hosting tonight, you may call please.
Commissioner Pearson.
Present.
Commissioner Musso.
Here.
Commissioner Capazola, excused. Commissioner Saleo.
Here.
Commissioner Ludes.
Present.
Deputy Director Romero.
Here.
Director Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Timmerman. Deputy Director Ostrom.
Here.
Director Lowry.
Here.
And to everyone on behalf of Commissioner Capazola, he would like to send his regrets. He planned on being here tonight. He was on vacation. He is on an island that is being affected by a natural disaster and could not get a flight back here today. But he will get back as soon as he can. But he wanted to send his regrets and I said to him that I would give those now. All right, so, good evening, everyone. My name is Hal Johnson. I have the honor of serving as the Business Administrator of Cumberland County and the Commissioners of Salem and Cumberland Counties have given me the honor of moderating this meeting tonight. The Commissioners of both Cumberland and Salem Counties, thank you for being here this evening. This is a public hearing regarding the award of an F, of a federal NTIA grant award, often called the Middle Mile Grant. The Commissioners have promised openness and transparency as to this process and that there would be public hearings regarding this grant. Ultimately, each board is going to have to decide to accept or not to accept this grant. Tonight's hearing is being livestreamed on Quinn Broadcasting's Facebook, YouTube, and is being televised on Quinn Broadcasting Channel 22. This meeting is also being recorded and will be downloaded and available on the Cumberland County website within a few days. My favorite metaphor, used probably about 10,000 times in my last job, is this: "The shepherd is a savior to the sheep, but a ruthless tyrant to the wolf and the bear." That metaphor stands for the proposition that there are two sides to every story. We have little doubt that there are people in this room who are very much in favor of the Middle Mile Grant. We are also pretty sure there are people in the room who oppose the Middle Mile Project. The Commissioners ultimately must decide, but as in the case of the shepherd metaphor, it's difficult to determine as to the shepherd if the sheep are right or the bear and the wolf are right. It depends on which side you're on. So we must all understand that in all probability, things are going to be said during this hearing with which you disagree, or things are going to be said that you believe are untrue. In that circumstance, the Commissioners are respectfully asking that you hold your comments and reaction as to any disagreement until it's your turn to talk or until after the meeting, when perhaps you can contact some of the Commissioners to voice what you disagree with, or you may write the Commissioners most easily by email at any time. But that means that the Commissioners and I are respectfully asking that there be no verbal or physical reaction from the crowd when someone is speaking, even if you disagree strongly with what the speaker is saying. This would include booing, or hissing, or other reactions involving sound of any kind. It's the desire of the Commissioners, and we hope everyone in this room that this be an orderly, dignified hearing. Verbal and/or physical reaction to things said with which his people disagree must be held to a bare minimum. At the conclusion of someone talking or asking or answering questions, it's not inappropriate to react, such as clapping briefly, but other than that type of recognition, we're asking respectfully, it's hoped that everyone will refrain from interfering with or interrupting the individual who is talking or asking questions, or the person who's answering those questions. It's the intention of the Comi, there will be a second hearing, it's scheduled for tomorrow night, at the Salem County Courthouse in Salem, beginning at 5:30. The Salem hearing, in additional to being in person, will be broadcast on Face, live on Facebook. It's the intention of both, both Boards of Commissioners to let everyone who would like to comment or to ask questions regarding this grant to do so. If an additional meeting is required, then they will consider having that meeting. As to the process of this hearing, you will be asked to approach the podium, which is right down there, and state your name and the town in which you live. Those who speak are not limited to living in Cumberland or Salem Counties. You'll be asked respectfully in what way you'd like to be referred to. So we're gonna just ask, I'm gonna say, would you like to be Mr. Johnson? Would you like to be Ms. or Mrs. Johnson? Would you like us to call you by your first name? But we're not doing that for any reason other than if we're gonna talk to you, or if someone's going to talk to you, we'd like to refer to you by the name that you're most comfortable with. So we're asked, so we will ask that, but that's the only reason. And you're then gonna be asked an additional question, and that is if you are employed by or work with any entity or company that may be financially impacted by this application. Unless you volunteer, you don't have to say what that entity is, but the fact that you may be financially impacted, we believe is a fair question. During your statement, you are allowed to ask questions or questions, a question or questions. If you ask a question, county representatives who completed the application that was successfully granted will be asked if they're able to answer that question. If the county representatives are not able to answer the question, the question will be noted and written by our staff, and it is intended that the question and answer to the question will be read at an August 22nd, 2023 Cumberland County Commission meeting, or perhaps any special meeting called as to this grant. We've offered two lists for you to sign tonight: one if you wish to speak and a second general sign-in list. The list asks your name, the town you live in, and your email address. As to that email address, the questions and answered and unanswered questions tonight will be forwarded to each of you who give us your email address, and you may get other general emails pertinent to this application in the future, such as notice of any special meeting, or any other such thing. The Commissioners hope that every question will be able to be answered to the satisfaction of the person posing the same. We think that we'll go for about 90 minutes, we'll then take a little break, we'll go for another 90 minutes, and another little break, if it takes that long for everyone to have their speak, to say what they'd like to say, and then we will go up until nine o'clock, because we're limited to use of the building until nine o'clock. Congressman Van Drew is present. He and his staff are instrumental in obtaining the grant for Cumberland and Salem Counties, and in respect to that effort, the Commissioners have asked that he be permitted to speak first. There then will be a brief presentation as to the project, and thereafter, the meeting will be open to those of you who have taken the time to be here tonight. Again, the Commissioners, thank you for being here. We repeat, it's the request of the Commissioners that you show respect and allow this to be an orderly and dignified hearing, and I'm sure that you will. All those things being said, Commissioners, anything else that you would like to say before we begin? Congressman Van Drew, sir, you have the floor.
So, thank you. Is this on? Let me see. How about now? How about now? Thank you. It's great to be here with you today. You're gonna have to forgive me because I have another, two more stops, I have to make two more events, so after I speak, I have to scoot out, but I want to thank the Commissioners for doing this. I want to thank both counties and all the Commissioners for the hard work that they do. It really makes a difference. And by the way, Hal, you can call me Jeff, since you were asking what, you all can call me Jeff, that's just fine. History is a great teacher. It does teach us a lot about who we are, where we are, and where we're going to go. And I have a little bit of history with Cumberland County. I've served in elected office both as a state assemblyman and a state senator for 16 years, and I serve now, for now five years, in the United States Congress. So it's been over two decades that I've served Cumberland County. And I truly mean this, I know politicians say things, but I really do love the county. It's become part of me, after all those years and so many friends and so many people that I've met. And I want to tell you a little bit about the people I've met in Cumberland and Salem County. Hardworking, good people. People that believe they often get short-changed by North Jersey, by Washington, and by others. People who believe that they deserve to have what other individuals have throughout this state. People who know, and these are people I talked to, whether they were farmers, and these farmers were saying, you know, farming has changed, we need to have access to the internet. Or whether it was schoolteachers, and actually children themselves, because they know, again, when they do their homework, when they do their research, they need to have access to the internet. How about the businesses? I remember talking to small businesses, and still have, throughout both counties, saying, "God, it's hard for us to compete because we're in a more remote part of the county, and we don't have any service whatsoever. It's not fair." And they're right. All these folks are right. How about public safety? Public safety, the ability for our fire and rescue to get on the internet. It's unbelievable that in the 21st century, that we don't have it for everyone. It's mind-boggling what a large swath of people don't have it. Now, I'm gonna be very frank, because that's the way I am, I tell the truth, I say what I believe. For years, and this doesn't apply to the employees of Comcast, they're good people, just doing their job, but for years, I have asked and pushed and worked, and when I mean years, I actually mean decades, for help for these counties, over and over again, promised, yes, something will happen, we'll do something now, and only to be disappointed. I was smart, I never told people that it was gonna happen, because I knew that it very well might not. So I stand before you, yes, as the congressperson, the congressman, that worked really, really hard to get this grant. Now, I want to explain something to you, these grants just don't grow on trees. This is not an easy grant to get. We were celebrating in my office, because our staff, our people, were day and night, and I'm not exaggerating, to get this grant. Our people put everything into it, because elected officials of both political parties said how important this was, and they really needed it. Of course they did. When people think they're getting short-changed in Salem and Cumberland, they are right. Let's tell the truth, it's wrong what's happened to them. You know Comcast is a multi-billion dollar corporation? And sometimes, again, not the people who work there, but sometimes huge international corporations, quite frankly, are as bad as big government. And that's what I, I hear, that some people from North Jersey who are gonna be here at this meeting, and you'll hear from them, and I'm sure they're not here to say, well, we have all this, but you shouldn't. They'll probably tell you that it will be a boondock, they'll probably tell you it's big government, they'll probably tell you it's, you know, not a good thing to do. Well, I want them to walk with me, because I did it. I want them to walk into our rural townships in both counties, talk to those people, talk to the people that don't have equal opportunity, talk to the people that want to do better, talk to the people that believe they love South Jersey and where they live, and why the hell isn't it that they have the cable, and why isn't it that they have the broadband that everybody else does? So we fought. Thirty-five of these grants were given out across the entire United States of America. And believe me, folks, if you don't take this grant, there's people in the queue that want it, we'll snap it up like that. This is a hard thing to do, it's a hard thing to get. We competed with the South, the Midwest, the Far West, again, with those rural communities also that don't have a fair opportunity. But we really pushed hard, we worked hard, and we believed in what we did. I guess I would say I'm surprised that, and it is good that we're having this meeting, by the way, because let everybody, you were exactly right, Hal, let everybody air their grievances, the positive, the negative, whatever they think. But I'm here to tell you that this is $24 million. $24 million to put the infrastructure in for the Middle Mile, but that is not the end of it, because what you have to understand is how these grants work. Once we accept that grant, then there's gonna be money for the end mile. There's gonna be much more money coming in for this project. To give it up, I don't know if I have the words, this is the last great hope we have to actually get this for our two counties. It is gonna be mind-boggling, the change that's gonna occur because of it. Think what that's gonna be for, again, our businesses, our teachers, our farmers, our children, our public safety. For God's sake, we gotta do this. So, I stand here before you saying that there are folks that are gonna come and say it's big government, it's not. You know what? Government, I'll tell you about big government, I'm not gonna give you that speech, I'll show you all the areas and all the ways we're wasting money in Washington, all the money we're sending around the world for all kinds of activities, but damn it, we can't take care of our Americans. We can't take care of the people right here. This isn't a big government thing, this is the right thing to do. This is about South Jersey, this is about Cumberland and Salem County, this is about giving our people a chance. So I very seldom go, I get truthfully, a decent number of grants, we've gotten a record number, record amount of money in for South Jersey over the past few years, and I don't go to each and every one and give a speech about why I think it's important, but this one's really a big deal. If we don't do this, somebody's gonna grab it, and by the way, if we don't do it, and you know, I'll do, I'll break my back for all of you, all of you, each and every one of you, but if we don't do it, it's gonna be really hard to get a grant for anything down here because of that. This is a special thing. I mean, we had to really talk to a lot of people and do a lot of begging and a lot of pushing to get this, because I knew how important it was. I trust you, I trust you, each and every one of you, I really do, I know every single one of you personally, and have had many conversations with you about a broad range of subjects. So whatever you decide, I will respect, even if I respectfully disagree, but I hope you'll decide the right thing. I hope you'll decide to do the right thing for the people of South Jersey and the people of your counties, because believe me, and I seldom say this, there's a lot of things you do and don't know. Again, this is truly the right thing to do, and it's truly a time in history, we'll probably never get this chance again, especially the way things are going in Washington right now. So I ask you to really think about it, I ask you to do what's right, I ask you to listen to everybody, and most of all, realize the import of how, how big a deal this is and how important it is, and I wish you Godspeed and the very best, and I appreciate you. I appreciate you for what you do. It's hard in public service today, but I know that you will do a good job. And with that, I know there's a lot of speakers, and you're gonna have a real long evening, and again, forgive me, I'd like to, I really would like to hear each and every one of them. I might jump up once in a while, which I know Mr. Johnson would yell at me, so it may be better than I'm not, but I do appreciate what you're doing. And remember, in my mind, if, you know, and I know we have mutual respect for each other, this is about a major multinational cooperation opposing the people that live and work in South Jersey. Thank you.
The application that the Congressman and his staff worked so hard to get approved was written on behalf of Cumberland and Salem Counties by the CCIA and by a company called VCOM. Dominic Veleco is here tonight to give you a brief presentation in regard to the project. Dominic, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Dominic Veleco, and actually, part of the team, as you had said, Mr. Johnson, it was the Improvement Authority, my firm was also involved as part of the team, both administrations from both counties were involved as part of the team, as was Triad Associates that helped put together the whole grant application. So I'm just gonna give you an overview of the application, of the award, and some of the benefits and the costs and that type of thing. Agenda, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna go over the Middle Mile Grant, a little bit about an execution plan, some of the pro forma, the projections that were put together on behalf of the counties to present to the NTIA, and we'll open it up to discussion, question and answers, which I think it'll probably come back to you, Mr. Johnson, at that point. So a little bit about the overview, Congressman Van Drew, Van Drew had mentioned that the NTIA, the National Telecommunications and Information Administration, part of the executive branch of the federal government, had put out $980 million of available federal assistance for the Middle Mile Grant program. Two hundred and sixty applications were received nationwide, as the Congressman had said. The Cumberland-Salem joint application was one of 35 awarded grants. This is a line that comes from the Notice of Funding Opportunity, which was basically the RFP, if you will. The eligible entry, and I put in here, i.e. the counties, or entity, I'm sorry, that they commit to offering nondiscriminatory interconnection to terrestrial and wireless, I know there's been a lot of questions of whether it's wireless, it's fiber, this grant was actually envisioned by the NTIA to include anything and everything: wireless, wireline, fiber, that type of thing, fiber to the home, to basically offer nondiscriminatory interconnection to terrestrial and wireless last-mile broadband providers. Again, this is also from the, from the Notice of Funding Opportunity. The eligible entry entity has identified supplemental investments or in-kind support, which we'll talk about. And then anchor institutions that are within 1,000 feet of this middle-mile network must be connected at 1 gigabyte or greater bandwidth, and we'll talk about that a little bit as well, that would include county buildings, libraries, et cetera, they're the anchor institutions. Part of this grant Notice of Funding Opportunity, and this is very important, the expected lifetime of this infrastructure is greater than 20 years. So here's the overview of the project costs. The total project cost was about $34.5 million. The federal award amount was just over $24 million, as the Congressman had said. So the match requirement that was left over would be 10 point, roughly $10.4 million. And you break this out by county on the match, what happens is Cumberland County's total match, total match was roughly, and I'm rounding these up, roughly $6.2 million. Cumberland County had an in-kind contribution, and there were a couple of radio towers that were part of this in-kind contribution. were part of this in-kind contribution, almost 1.4, so that leaves a cash contribution for Cumberland County of just under $5 million. Salem County, similar, $4.2 million total match, they had 1 point, almost $2 million in in-kind contribution, so the cash that would be required to be contributed by Salem County for this network, a little over $2 million. And then on the bottom, it talks about the total cash match for both counties is just under $7 million. The in-kind match that was submitted by both counties was a little over $3 million, and that adds up to the 10.3 that's at the top. So basically, it's $34 million network. The way that the government, that the NTIA does this is the, these in-kind contributions get added in to that $34 million, so sort of grossed up, if you will, and then they get taken back out again as a credit. So the award, and at the top, you notice what I have in here, is that the federal government will fund 70% of the network, and then the counties will fund 30% of the network. Of that 30%, the in-kind match can be part of it. This is a diagram that was in the middle mile application, just to show you the estimated middle mile network. You could see that there's multiple rings here, it traverses both counties, it goes east to west, north to south, and that's the middle mile as proposed. And actually, if it's, might be a little bit difficult to see on here, and I apologize, but you'll see little dots that are on there, and you'll see on the legend, there are the anchor institutions. We got a list of anchor institutions from both counties, which, again, included libraries, county buildings, things like that. So you'll see that several of the, of the anchor institutions that are nearby, you'll see that are basically on this middle mile network. So part of it was to make sure we connected as many of these anchor institutions as possible. So the opportunities for the proposed middle mile network, first is to improve internet service to residents and businesses, you've heard the congressman talk about that. The way that a middle mile network will improve this service, it's not a last-mile network, a lot of people have asked about that last connection to the house, it's not a last-mile network. You also heard the congressman talk about additional money and, and to basically make that last-mile connection, that's not part of this application at this point, and this grant award. But what it does is, is by building this infrastructure and putting it in place, it lowers the bar for infrastructure entry costs. So it lowers the hurdle. So part of the problem that, that, and it's very intuitive, I think, for all of you, the, you heard the congressman talk about areas where the counties don't have service. Well, it's pretty intuitive, I think, to most people, that big companies, they have to do a return on investment to shareholders. And what happens is, you get to some of these areas where there's not enough homes passed, there's not enough businesses, there's not enough people there, it doesn't make sense, they can't get a return on investment if they were to build this themselves. And so what do they do? They don't build the whole county. They don't build the whole area. It's not just here in Cumberland and Salem Counties, it's around the country. When there's not enough population density, you can't get a return on investment. But with a middle mile that's provided by someone else, that the federal government is, is funding, what happens is, you can lower that bar, you lower that hurdle, it's easier for companies to come in, and now, all of a sudden, they can make a return on investment and actually service customers and not be in the red the whole time. The, and that's my, the second point here, where enhances the return on investment dynamics, and does that, like I said, by lowering the bar. And it provides low-cost network backbone for competition, that's another big thing that you have in these two counties, and I'll show you some other maps. And again, it's not just here, it's everywhere around the country. You don't have a lot of competition. Where I live, I don't have a lot of competition, I'm stuck with one carrier, I won't even tell you who the carrier is, but I'm stuck with one carrier, I'm stuck paying the prices, when my bill goes up, I don't have a choice. So I have to pay more, and that's what you all do. This will also, so having this middle mile network, what it'll do is it'll provide the opportunity for competition in that internet service provider space to come in, again, it's a lower entry point for them to come in. It'll improve cellular service, and the way that it'll improve cellular service is, it allows lower-cost interconnection to towers. So in this, for the cellular companies, the three largest expenses that they have, first is tower rent, the second is interconnection, the fiber that goes to the towers, the third is employees. So we can't do anything about employees, but certainly, this middle mile network can help with the interconnection costs, and it can help, in some cases, where there's towers available, it can help with the tower costs. And again, it enhances the return on investment dynamics for these cellular companies, and if you look, you'll see this, I'll show you a couple of maps in a minute. You'll see the service that you have today, it won't be any surprise to anyone, you'll see what it is. And what'll happen is, is they basically, they, and I've seen this in, frankly, in urban areas too, the byways and highways, and everyone knows that. I know, I drive down 49, I know, Mr. Johnson, you and I were talking about this before, I turned off to go to a motorcycle shop down there, and that's it, I'm off the edge of the earth. The, so this will, what this will do is, and what happens is, again, the wireless companies, the same as the fiber and the cable companies, same issue, they, if I don't have enough density, I can't produce a return on investment. It's really that simple. The, it'll improve intra-county interconnections. So the counties today, and I don't remember what the number is for Salem County, but I know for Cumberland County, numbers that I've been told, is the county spends about $350,000 a year interconnecting all of its buildings, which it needs to. It needs, it needs the service, it needs internet, all the employees need internet, they have interconnection between buildings for a variety of different things, everything that you might imagine to basically run the county. So now what happens is, any of those anchor institutions that are on here, any of those buildings, or any that are close, can now get access to this middle mile network, yes, the county will have to, and it's not included in here, the county, each county will have to invest in some of the electronics, 'cause this is a dark fiber network, they're gonna have to light that network. However, if you look at $350,000 a year, even if I had a million dollars in electronics, it's only three years to pay it off. So over a 10-year period, I can pay off in three years, if you talk about return on investment, you get it. So it'll improve intra-county interconnections as well. It'll improve the public safety system, and there's been a lot of questions about that. So currently, the, the public safety systems, they're either connected by or, or going to be connected by microwave radios, so the radio links between the towers. The, the radio links specifically connect all the towers, and the way that they're designed is that if one of the links goes down for some reason, let's say an east link, a east link that's leaving a tower goes down, all that voice traffic gets routed to the west, because it goes around the ring. Well, the same thing would happen here. The difference here is, because these towers are specifically requested by the NTIA to be included and to provide wireless broadband last-mile connections, it was a no-brainer to add them to this. There was no extra cost, it is a county anchor institution at that point, it really was a no-brainer. So there's a lot of questions that I've heard about, how does it improve public safety? Well, if you look at this, it turns out that the current ones are connected with microwave, but microwave's got a limited bandwidth. So as, and you've seen this, you've seen it in the news, and you've probably seen it locally as well, all your public safety officers, first responders, now have video cameras on the cars, they're wearing wearable cameras on their, on their uniforms, they're, they're trying to access things like hazmat databases, the, you know, you see this on like CSI on TV, and this, you think all this happens. Well, I've worked with plenty of these counties, and I've seen this, it doesn't happen like you think. In fact, you gotta give a lot of credit to the first responders with what they're able to do with what they don't have. The first responders really do tremendous work with the limited toolset, because the tools are expensive. This gives the opportunity to add additional bandwidth and additional redundancy. So there's been questions, and one of the questions was, that I've heard multiple times is, aren't there fiber at the towers already? Well, the answer is yes. But, and some of these, like in Cumberland County, for example, there's fiber that was run to the towers because the county was leasing fiber from Verizon. And they were leasing to the tune of about $100,000 a year. So what they did was, they said, they were building the microwave system, and when you build this microwave system, basically reduce that. And the microwave system actually is more redundant and more diverse, because like I said, it's, it's a ring, so it's got connections that are going east and west. If one gets cut, the other one's still available. Well, this fiber will be the same thing. So what's the difference between this fiber and the fiber that's there today? Fiber that's there today is a single line going in. If it gets cut, if the pole gets hit out in front of that tower, it's down, it doesn't matter, until that gets repaired. This will come into the towers from two directions, poles on this side, poles on that side, come in two directions. If poles get hit on the right side, the poles on the left side take over. What this does is it provides additional bandwidth, additional redundancy, so think of, think of belts and suspenders. What I've seen with most first responders, we've got plenty of them here in the audience, and they know what I'm talking about, belts and suspenders are what work for them, because when they're in the heat of the moment and they're trying to help someone, you need to make sure that this thing works. So when I've got a catastrophic storm coming across the bay and hitting both counties and knocking down trees and all kinds of other things, and knocking down fiber, potentially knocking one of those microwave dishes off path, what I need more than anything is I need to make sure that the first responders can stay in communication to help the residents and the constituents. So it'll help with that, and it helps effectively at no cost, so it's not that $100,000 a year that the, like Cumberland County was paying to Verizon, for example, to lease the fiber services for them. So it'll improve the public safety system as well. And finally, what it does is it improves business expansion capabilities, so the, all of a sudden, there's gonna be this huge pipeline, significant broadband access to nearby metro areas. This network will connect into POPs, or points of presence, in Wilmington, Delaware, and in Philadelphia. The idea there is, any of the big carriers that wanna get on, they can hop on at that point of presence, and they get brought all the way down to Cumberland and Salem County. So there's a huge savings for them at that point, and it's an incentive for them to get in there. So all of a sudden, now you've got this access in, it'll be in like what's typically called a carrier hotel, there'll be access to this network at these major points of interconnection in these big cities that are nearby. That'll help with things like, and I realize this is a sore topic for some people, but the warehouse and distribution center opportunities need lots of fiber, they need lots of bandwidth. The data centers, data, think about this, Salem County's right across the river from Delaware, from Wilmington. So I'm working on a project right now in New York and North Jersey, we've got a middle mile, it's a dark fiber project, and they've got data centers in both locations. And why do they have them in both locations? Because if you're using Amazon, you're using Big Box or Black Box, using any of these, any of these web services that you know and, and use today regularly, they have these huge, huge data centers, and they have redundant data centers, why are they up all the time? Usually, your phone's going down more than the data centers are going down. But they're looking for places that are lower cost, that have close access, so they have low latency, close access to the major population centers, and I've got a skilled workforce that hopefully, it's a lower cost of living and a lower cost to operate these data centers in a place like this. So it's an opportunity for data centers in, in these areas as well. And finally, it's a catalyst for other connected businesses that have significant broadband So the execution plan that was outlined in the, in the middle mile application, basically was, and this is part of the discussion, that there's been multiple county meetings at both counties, I've been, I've attended some of them, some of the other agencies that have worked on this have attended some as well. The idea is to engage potential network partners. A lot of the questions have come up about, there's no contracts, how do you know? Well, there are no contracts, because there's no network, because there was no money. So until there's a grant that's accepted, and until that grant that's accepted then funds the building of the network, there's nothing to talk about with companies. So the, in parallel with confirming this network architecture that you saw in that other diagram, and in parallel with that will be to engage potential partners, the partners being some of the current broadband providers that are there today, some of the, some of the wireless companies that are there today. For any of you that have looked at the, and have read the application, the application actually had a letter of support from T-Mobile, and T-Mobile was interested in doing this. One of the things that T-Mobile's doing around the country is, and you've probably seen this with commercials too, they're offering what they call 5G home, Verizon actually offers 5G home as well, on their wireless network. They have these new 5G frequencies that came out, they're deploying them today, they're very high bandwidth, they need fiber to basically support these connections, and what happens is, and they don't, you know, they won't make it to every house, not every person's interested, but when you go back to what I talked about with the competition, what happens is, you've enabled competition to come in, and now you have a choice, hopefully better service and lower costs, is what happens with competition. So the first part of the plan will be to engage potential partners and then work on negotiating contracts. And there's a couple of ways to negotiate the contract, you just lease the fiber, either on a per strand or on a bulk basis. The other thing you can do is, and I've mentioned this to the counties before in the past, another project that I'm working on, there's a, in the dark fiber world, there's, there's, not that it's the dark world, but the dark fiber space, I'll call it, the, there's a thing called an IRU, an indefensible right of use. So basically, what you can do with an IRU, and one of the concerns I've heard, and it's a very valid concern, one of the concerns is, well, we're gonna have to bear the brunt of these operating costs. And the answer is, well, yes, but the idea and the projection is that it's not only supposed to offset the costs, it's supposed to make a couple bucks on top of it, so that the counties have a little bit of money in their pockets, more importantly, you've got this service, and very important, the county's not carrying any cost. So one way to do this, and these have been discussions, and it's not specifically outlined in the application or anything like that, this is just what happens in a dark fiber space, other projects that I'm working on, an IRU. What you do basically is you pre-sell X amount of fiber for a period of time, 10, 15, 20 years. You do that, you get all the money upfront, and there's your carrying costs. So these companies that operate dark fiber networks do this on a regular basis, and what they'll do is, again, this is a private, this is what happens in the private space. So from a government space, probably what's gonna happen is, these things are gonna have to be advertised, but you're advertising, you put it out there to everyone, and hopefully the idea is, you're gonna bring in companies that are interested in negotiating an IRU. When you get the IRU, what happens is, you take that cash, you put it in the bank, and the counties use that at that point to cover their operating costs. And then any leased fiber after that, and IRU's only a small section of the, of the fiber. You only, you're only gonna negotiate so much of it. And the rest of it, you're just gonna use for regular leasing costs, and that's how most dark fiber operators work, and then that becomes the gravy on top of it. So the idea here is, you get a couple of key partners, you collaborate on this network topology, because some of those partners may say, "Well, I really need it to be a little bit over here, a little bit over there," and there's flexibility in where the final route goes, plus or minus, but flexibility. So that's a very, very important part of the execution plan. The other thing is the overall network, the network architecture that the, and I'll just walk through the rest of these quickly, the overall network topology's gotta be finalized, what's there today is proposed, the, the counties, and rightfully so, did not spend money on specifically, and this was a question I heard as well, this network is not 100% designed, this network is outlined as to where it would go, there's gonna be some plus or minuses in it, but it would be millions and millions of dollars that the county would have spent, each county would have spent, to actually design these networks, verify every pole, verify this, verify that. Those costs were allowed as reimbursable costs under the grant by the Notice of Funding Opportunity. So the county, both counties prudently said, "Right, well, that'll be something that gets paid for later, and it gets paid for if the grant was awarded." The technology selection is really fiber size and things like that, the POP connections are, like I mentioned, in Philadelphia and in Wilmington, there's various different places you can connect there, so that has to get nailed down. And then there's always gonna be some value engineering, because again, it's not completely designed, it's high-level design is what it is. The outside plant design, and this is what a lot of people have talked about as well, the outside plant is basically the poles, the pole selection, in some cases, it's gonna be buried fiber, depending on where it was. I know I had a conversation with some of the commissioners in, in Cumberland County, where they were saying that the Utilities Authority is looking to put some new sewer lines and water lines and things like that, and it, if it makes sense, it's a perfect opportunity to bury it right next to it, actually lowers the cost, and makes it better for both organizations at that point. The design and engineering of basically how this stuff will hang on the poles, or in the ground, or there's bridge crossings and things like that, how that's gonna happen. Structural analyses will have to be done on each one of those, every single pole, and then there's gonna be environmental questions on some of these as well. Most of them will go right through, some will have environmental questions, that rolls into the next, the ROW, or the right-of-way. The right-of-way, there's gonna be- The right-of-way, there's going to be title research, which has got to determine if there's title to actually go down that particular right-of-way. Then there's going to be right-of-way negotiations with whoever owns the poles and/or the ground, or in this case, it's the counties. And then there's going to be pole attachment negotiations as well. And a lot of that actually falls under the BPU's jurisdiction. And finally, construction. This construction will have to be put out the RFP. There's multiple companies in this area that construct these networks, Carr &amp; Duff, Danella, Henckels &amp; McCoy, Highland Electric. There's a bunch of companies in this area that are building these networks, they build them for everyone. They build them for Comcast, they build them for Verizon, they build them for Crown Fiber, they build them for Zayo Fiber, they build them for all these companies. They have the trucks, the equipment, the skills. It'll be put out the RFP, and what was envisioned was that it's approximately 250-mile network, it'll be broken up probably into four or five pieces from a bid standpoint, so that you can bid out 40 or 50, however many miles, in a section, whatever makes logical sense, and you can get the best pricing for it, and you can get a faster install instead of having one company try to install 250 miles. And then final thing, it's going to be budget reconciliation. I've spoken with the CFOs of both counties on that, that's an ongoing process. In fact, part of the, part of the NTIA's requirement is that this budget reconciliation happens on a regular basis, and the CFOs from both counties will be actively involved in that, because they'll have to submit this information to basically demonstrate, here's the grant, here's the grant award, here's how we fit within the grant, here's what we have left, that type of thing. So as part of the application, there was a pro forma. Pro forma is a financial projection, it's a projection is what it is. So at the very top, it says pro forma equals projection. The key on that is it's going to be modified based upon the actual market conditions and the agreements and the contracts that are negotiated. What the NTIA was looking for with the pro forma, and they had a specific format of the pro forma, and they said in the application, you shall use this format. So the team that worked on this worked with the CFOs from both counties to then develop and submit that pro forma. The pro forma, it was designed as a conservative budgetary fit within the budget, within the grant process. Overall, the pro forma, it's approximately 220 route miles, but it's 253 fiber miles. So, you know, fiber between poles, there's a little bit of sag, and what happens is when you do that over 8,000 poles, it starts to add up, plus you're going up and down poles, and you've got horizontals that are going across to some of these anchor institutions. So it was determined it's about 253 actual fiber miles, but it's, and 253 was the number that was then used for all the pro forma projections. But it's, the actual route miles are approximately 220. As I mentioned, includes the POPs in Wilmington and Philadelphia, a dual-ring architecture for redundancy and diversity. The idea there is, is if it gets cut in one spot because a pole gets taken out by an accident, the traffic's just routed back around, there's no disconnect, because it's not a single line, there's no single threads at that point. It's estimated about 8,000 poles based upon the distance, and the plan was for 1728-strand dark fiber. So 1728 sounds like a big number of fibers, and it is. And the 1728-strand fiber is a little more than an inch, so if you can imagine, I'm not sure how that they do it, but they got 1728 strands of glass inside a one-inch piece of cable. The, what's important about that is, I go back to what I said, that the Notice of Funding Opportunity said that this network has to be 20 years or greater. So at the time, staffing, any pro forma, any projection, it's not unreasonable that you're going to have to have some people associated with the network. And so what was put in the staffing, and the staffing honestly, the hiring would be based upon the build-out and the contract sign. The counties also have the opportunity to go to a third party and have a third party run this, there's lots of opportunities for negotiation. But the staffing that was included in there for cost purposes, three IT network managers, one admin network manager, one clerk for billing, and one, one non-commissioned salesperson. Someone's got to write orders for companies that are coming in, that type of thing. The in-kind contributions were the towers. So in Cumberland, there's four towers, Cedarville, Greenwich, Vineland, and Morris River, and in Salem, there were two towers, Woodstown and Pitts Grove. The, two of the tower, there's four, that's it, there's six towers total that are. And then finally, part of it, and this is part of the construction cost as well, is there, what were referred to as fiber huts, so basically buildings at each one of these interconnection points, there's 24 interconnection points around there. These buildings, they were, what was proposed in the, in the response to the NTIA was 12-foot by 20-foot environmentally prefabricated buildings, like you see on the sides of road, that roads that hold traffic signals, they, they, generators, they're utility buildings, they're used for cell site buildings, that type of thing. 24 of those buildings were around. On the operating expenses, pole attachments were included at $10 per pole per year, that's based upon formulas that are available at the BPU. Network maintenance was estimated at 1% of construction cost, and so it's about $300,000 a year, starting at year three, because there's no network maintenance until it's actually up and operating. And the maintenance on this, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a dark fiber network, so it's not lit, there's no electronics on it at that point. So the only maintenance, honestly, and this can be subcontracted out as part of the, as a bid process, the only maintenance is, is if someone comes in and they take out a pole because of an accident, and they cut the fiber, then the counties would have a contract with someone like Henckels &amp; McCoy, Danella, one of these companies that do the fiber builds, they'll also come in, cut, resplice the fiber, and get that portion of the network back going again. So that was estimated at $300,000 a year, it starts in year three. There's no other maintenance per se for this, the network at that point. The network monitoring, there is a little bit of monitoring, so what would happen is there are electronics, small amount of electronics that are put on a network that basically, what happens is, is you send a light signal out, and you're just waiting for it to come back, and it's just something that watches it all the time. So that if for some reason a signal doesn't come back, it knows that there's a cut somewhere in the network, that alerts the, the network people, they call out the construction people to come fix it, and, and that's what the network monitoring would be. Utilities at these huts, it's estimated to be about $100 per month is basically electricity. And then staffing, I mentioned, six full-time equivalents, the costs that were in there, and these were all used based upon a research of staffing of these types of positions, 645,000 annual, six full-time equivalents, and again, the hiring's based upon the build-out and the contract sign. The capital expenses that were in the pro forma, and there's been a lot of questions about the cost per mile and that type of thing. So the overall cost per mile for the project is $136,000 a mile. The actual fiber bill part of it is 110,000, approximately 110,000 per mile, which excludes, the 136 includes the in-kind match, there's a contingency that the NTIA says, we want a contingency line in here, so it includes the contingency, any in-kind contributions. But the fiber bill, if you look at just the fiber bill, it's $110,000 per mile. That conservatively compares with a typical cost of about $85,000 per mile that you hear a lot of people talk about when you're building these fiber networks. In fact, we were on a conversation with, with Comcast in the beginning of this project, and they were saying that one of the towns that they're working with, it was $81,000 a mile for them to extend the network. So it was in the right ballpark. What we, we don't have cost yet on our, there's going to be some buried, which buried's a little more expensive, there's going to be some river crossings, so bridge crossings are a little more expensive. So conservatively, it's $110,000 a mile. One of the questions that I had heard was, how do we know we're, we are not going to go over budget, which is a very valid question. The, when you look at, first of all, if I've got 250 miles to spread this out over, one, and if I've got typical cost of about $85,000, and one of the network operators here was spending $81,000, so it's in the right ballpark, I've got enough room in here for some cost if they go a little higher, I have to talk a little louder, if they go a little higher, the, there's some room in there. And basically, basically, it was a conservative push as part of this pro forma to make sure there was, one, enough money in there to cover potential costs, and enough room, enough wiggle room in there. But also, a number that the NTIA would review, and their people reviewed, and I know the CFOs from both counties had gotten information, lots of questions from the NTIA about this pro forma, and NTIA reviewed the pro forma, and what they did was they approved the pro forma, so they were okay with this budgetary estimate. And it includes all engineering permitting, acquisition, all installation labor and fiber cable. And so that's all billed into the 110,000 a mile. The projected revenues for the pro forma, as any, as any projection and as any pro forma, you start off a lower percentage, so 5% of the fiber strands starting in year three, because the network is going to, you'll see in a minute, it's only two years to build it, and that's what was allocated with, within the schedule, and that's what was committed to with NTIA. It's 5% per year is the increase of fiber, so I heard questions like, it's 43 fibers? Yes, that's correct. And it's, that's 5% of the beginning, year one is 43 fibers, to add up 1728. The, what I've seen in these other projects is these companies buy fibers typically in multiples. So like the one I'm working on up in North Jersey, it's different, it's between New York and New Jersey, they're buying hundreds at a time, hundreds of fibers at a time. And this is companies just connecting two points, and they need it for a variety of different reasons. So the opportunity here is, is that anyone that comes in is likely going to buy more, it's not going to be one company, one fiber, that's not normally how this works. The fiber, the dark fiber, the rate here that was put in the pro forma was $1,000 per strand per month, and remember, that's, that covers the whole 250 miles, so that's pretty, pretty good price for 250 miles. And you can get up to dedicated, up to, depending upon the electronics that the lessor, or the lessy, which would be the contracted company, depending upon what electronics they put on, you get up to 10 gigabits per fiber, so it's a fair amount of bandwidth. That compares with 1,500 to 2,000 a month for buying a circuit from one of the existing companies that are out there today in the 50 to 100 megabyte range. So it's a pretty good amount of capacity that you would buy from these companies today, but you don't buy a piece of dedicated fiber from the company, you're buying a piece of their network, and you, you're in the stream with everyone else, and you're buying capacity is what you're buying. In this case, with dark fiber, you're buying dedicated fiber. The colocation is another thing, so in any of these type of fiber networks, I mentioned like these POPs that are in Wilmington and Philadelphia, it's called colocation, where all these carriers come in, they connect at the same point, so they'll cross-connect from one network to the other. Colocation is assumed at 100 hours per month per fiber hut, and it compares with 100 to 500 per month in other carrier hotels. And again, that revenue's starting in year three. Tower revenue, conservatively, was estimated at $500 a month. I've heard questions about, you know, Vineland was getting $2,500 a month for one of their towers, and I'm sure they were. If you look down at the bottom, it says compares with the average tower rent of 2,500 to 3,500. So this is a projection, this was a conservative projection, this doesn't lock the counties in at 500. In fact, one of the things that I said in the beginning was that the counties and the actual numbers can be based upon the market conditions. So if a wireless carrier is paying the 2,500 bucks a month, which I have to tell you, the average is, is, in this area is the 2,500, 3,500, other parts of the state, it's $4,000 a month or more. So from a conservative revenue projection standpoint, there's $500 that was put in there. If it turns out that $1,500 is negotiated with it, with a carrier, from a projection standpoint, it's the, it's the equivalent of three carriers instead of one of 500. So a lot of people have asked the question, and I've heard this over and over, like this is a sweetheart deal. Well, it's a projection, it's not a sweetheart deal, it's a projection. The projection was low revenues to be conservative, high, high capital cost to be conservative. So the idea is potentially you could lower capital costs, and you could raise revenues, and you meet somewhere in the middle, and it becomes self-sustaining very, very quick. And then finally, the county interconnection, there's no cost specifically, I mentioned that Cumberland County, for example, it's my understanding, they're spending about $350,000 a year, which is probably about right, on interconnection costs with one of the broadband providers. None of those, if there's potential annual savings there, none of those savings were included in the pro forma. So if any of those savings are able to take place, it's all gravy on top. Project schedule, this is the schedule that was presented as part of the application, and basically it shows it's a two-year schedule, it's a very, it's a very aggressive schedule. One of the things with the, and the whole team looked at this very closely, and the idea was that the, the schedule, there was additional consideration that NTI gave for an aggressive schedule. So this whole idea that we said before about maybe breaking the fiber up into five different pieces, and giving companies 50 or so miles at a shot to build, you could get four or five companies at that point, building at the same time and building pieces of it, and you eventually connect it all together. So the thinking was that that's how you're going to make this aggressive schedule. Again, this is the schedule that was put forth to NTIA for the successful application and the ultimate grant award. There's other open access, and open access means anyone can use it, because that's what it said in the beginning, if you recall. There's other open access middle mile networks, there's a few that I put down here, most of these came from, there's a report by Pew Charitable Trusts, I just have the quote on the bottom, but if you look up Pew Charitable Trust, and you look up, I don't have their actual reference here, but if you look it up, and you look up some of the broadband studies that they've done, there's, there's California, Illinois, Kentucky, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, Vermont, there's one in Medina County, Ohio, so it's a single county, and what they did, not unlike what you're looking at here, was they added this middle mile broadband network, and what it did was it increased connectivity for businesses and residents and that type of thing, just like the NTIA was talking about, and it worked, and you have to read their story. So these are just some of the ones that are out there today. Questions about this FCC broadband data, you've heard a lot about this, there is a, you have to understand, the FCC's been trying to figure out how to collect accurate broadband data for years. It's problematic, because it's not easy to do. This data is self-reported by the carriers. So technically, I guess, the carriers can get their hands slapped if the data's bad. But on a, a wireline perspective, it's, you can't test it unless you had devices in every home, testing what the actual speeds were, you can't test it. The networks that you have in these counties today, like Verizon's FiOS, not their DSL, that's in some of the areas, that's, that's not very good. The, but Verizon FiOS and then Comcast Network has pretty high speeds. Where it works, it's got pretty high speeds. In fact, it exceeds some of the broadband, both of those networks exceed the broadband minimums that are established by NTIA and the FCC. So there's no question about that. But the way that the current process, this map that you're looking at here, this was just taken off of the FCC website, it's relatively, the process has been around for, for quite some time, and there's been issues and errors with the process for years, and the FCC's been trying to get it more accurate. The current version of the process, which is this year, and some of this data was only released the last couple of months, just very recently, what you can do is you can go onto the FCC website, anyone can do this, you zero in, you pick a provider, you pick an area, you pick your address, and it'll tell you. So you'll see on this map here, there's some white areas, you see some darker areas, so the darker areas, a little hard to see on this, but with the darker areas, there's more service provided by more providers, this happens to be a wireless one, because it's a little easier to see. The, and there's a challenge process, and it's an ongoing thing. So you've heard of some of this, you may have heard of this, where there are government entities, and then there are even private entities that are challenging some of the data. And the reason they challenge the data is because if there's funding available, for example, I was involved in a project in South Dakota, and one company was claiming that they had certain level of service, well, there were grants that were available or not available, depending upon what the service levels were. So not that the company was lying, but there's an incentive to bolster your response, let's just put it that way. The, in general, I mean, the, I think the latest version of what the FCC's got is probably more accurate than it has been in the past, it's still not 100% accurate. If you look at this, this was Comcast in Cumberland County, this is from 2022. Now, in 2022, only a year ago, what they had was they had this process, and the way the process worked is that if you served one home, so let's say Comcast or Verizon... is that if you served one home, so let's say Comcast or Verizon. If I serve one home in what's known as a census block, and the census blocks vary. But if you look, like I'll pick this one spot here in Morris River, for example. I don't know if that's one or more census blocks, but let's just say, because the more, the census blocks get bigger, the more rural the areas become. So let's say this is one census block. So in this case here, and under the FCC rules, if Comcast in this case had one customer that they provide service to and it was within a census block, they can claim the whole census block. Well, this was just last year's data. So now there's been discussions about this year's data. So my question really is, is, I mean, has anyone seen any major builds going on that you think this has filled in more between last year and this year? My guess is no. So what you can see also is with this, in Cumberland County, you can see Comcast provides service to a good portion of the county. And it's probably a high percentage of the population, I would imagine. When you look at it from population, this is just the aerial coverage here. You can see there's areas of the county, especially to the west side, that, you know, they don't cover. And then there's areas to the east that they don't cover. And some of that's forest. And so there are no people in some of those areas. But that's what was reported. And what you can see here, this is Verizon. Now Verizon basically has a swath across the top. So between these two maps, they're the two primary broadband providers in Cumberland County. What you can see is, except for that little bit of overlap area, and I don't know how they compete with each other cost wise. I don't live in any of those areas. But I know I used to live in an area where I had both Comcast and Verizon and I would switch back and forth all the time every two years. And my bill was 30% lower than my father-in-law's five miles away in the next town because he only had one provider. But what you could see here is there is Verizon provides service to, and this is FiOS service. They have their DSL in some other areas, but DSL speeds don't qualify under NTIA or FCC's broadband definition. So you could see there's two providers. Basically, there's one majority provider and one minority provider. And when you look at Salem County, it's basically the same thing. So Salem has a good portion of the county, it's provided by one provider, in this case Comcast. And again, this is 2022 data. And the reason I'm showing 2022 is because the, this other data and the ability to map it only came out last month or two. And so in these data, we had this available for this meeting at this point. This is the old, this was, again, it was only last year's methodology. So there's a difference in the methodology. However, the methodology is supposed to be more accurate in that the new methodology, what it does is you're allowed to show service, let me back up here. So if I show service to one location, I can claim that location. If I serve, if I show service to a second location, I can claim that location too. When you go back to what I said about these census blocks, I might have two or three locations within the census block. And we know that there's some stretches of some of the towns where the providers just stop and you go down the road and there's no service down the end of the road. But in, in the 2022 data, they could claim that they provided it. But in the 2023 data, they're not allowed to claim that. So if anything, you would expect the 2023 data, and this has only become recently available as far as mapping and downloading and that type of thing. This, this other 2022 data has been available, was available last year. But you could see if, if I was able to provide service, if I'm able to claim an entire census block, which could be, you know, a thousand acres or something like that. If I were able to claim one census block because I have one person served in it and now I have to claim every single point within that same census block, intuitively you would say my 2023 map should look a little less than this intuitively, is what you'd expect. Again, Verizon in Salem County. Again, it's similar to Cumberland in that there's some overlap in some of the areas, but not all the areas. So there's one primary provider and there's one secondary provider in a small area. So there's a little bit of competition. And then this is the other thing I was talking about. The wireless broadband, so the wireless usage. And, and under NTIA, the, the speeds that are considered broadband and wireless are 25 megabits up, down, from the tower down to the, to the phone. It's three megabits up. I just showed the down, the downlink here. So you could see on the, on the left, you can see Salem County. And what you see there is anything that's green matches the FCC or the NTIA's definition of wireless broadband of 25 megabits. So it's significantly less than the wireline than fiber, which is 100 megabits. And what's important here, when you look at this, you can see there's lots of areas of red. What's more important is you can see on some of these, like over here in Cumberland County, you can see there's areas where there's just missing. The lines aren't connected. That's either because it was poor service or no service and you couldn't get it. The, and so this is basically any, the red's anything less than 25 megabits. So it's from zero to 25. It doesn't cut it off. And what you could see is, and if you've used the cell phone around these two counties, you probably would say, yeah, mostly it works in the green areas. It's the towns and the highways and the byways is where it works. And there's towers. So there's a tower in each one of these spots. So that's what you have. This data here was not from the FCC. This data was actually collected data using devices, using calibrated devices and going out and running speed tests throughout the entire both counties in August of last year. T-Mobile, same way. It looks very similar. Verizon Wireless looks very similar. So I had AT&amp;T, Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon. They all look similar. They all have similar levels of service. And basically it's what we described earlier, that everyone knows where the, where you have service in the county. And I think most people that live here know where they don't have service. And if you look at these maps, my guess is your experience probably close to what's shown on these maps. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Johnson for any questions.
To the commissioners, any questions at this time? Or shall we just start listening to the statements from the office? So everyone, we are asked that you sign up if you'd like to speak. We're going to go right by the order of your signing in. It is the tradition of Cumberland and Salem Counties that there be five minutes per speaker for a sub. So there are people that are going to be pointing at D. like if you take more than five minutes and over an ass that you tried to make the case. Those names that you would like to say to the commissioners to about five minutes. Back to you, said the first person to sign up, James Irwin. Sir, of the town, that you're from?
Washington DC.
Okay. And sir, any financial interest whatsoever in this type of a business?
I do not have any financial interest in this project. I am here tonight in my professional capacity as an expert in telecommunications policy. All right. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Obviously, I don't have any personal relationships with the commissioners tonight. So I cannot appeal to friendship. I'll have to rely on facts. But I hope that you accept me as a neutral observer who has some expertise in these issues without a direct local dog in the fight. I work for Americans for Tax Reform and also run Digital Liberty, which is a project of Americans for Tax Reform that advocates for a free market approach to internet and telecom policy. Before joining ATR, I worked for Senator Susan Collins on Capitol Hill, where I was involved in writing the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, as well as the broadband provisions thereof, known as the BEED program, the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. Tonight, I'm here to urge you to, instead of relying on the middle mile grant program, instead consider what the BEED program can do in partnership with the private sector to be much stronger than a municipally local owned and taxpayer funded dark fiber middle mile network. As a taxpayer advocacy group, we are obviously concerned with lowering rates and simplifying the tax code, but also with how tax dollars are spent. And as an expert in telecommunications policy, I can tell you that federal, state, county and municipal subsidies for these types of broadband networks are some of the most worst use, misuses of taxpayer dollars that are out there for these government owned networks or GONs, as we like to call them. These are generally socialistic schemes that do not succeed in their own terms and should be avoided. And I'll go a little bit into why. One of the main reasons middle mile should be avoided is because, as has been made clear multiple times here tonight, this network is not going to connect to anybody's home. It's not going to deliver service to those houses that, those areas that were shown at the end of the slideshow. This is going to connect to community anchor institutions. This will mean more broadband for those institutions, but these are taxpayer funded entities that will be the anchor tenants of this network. So either directly or indirectly, the taxpayers of these counties are going to be funding this network to the tune of close to a million dollars per year. There are hundreds of examples of failed networks like this around the country I could go through. One example I like to hold up is Swiftel, which is started in Brookings, South Dakota by their local telephone company and was supposed to turn a profit after 10 years. It is currently on track to turn a profit in 349 years by current estimates. We have published a handbook for state legislators and broadband officials, copies of which I will provide to the commission tonight, that explains the BEED program and recommends best practice to implement this on the state and local level. The best approaches we outline in the book is to partner with the private sector who has already had a footprint in your area and are able to expand their sustainable, secure networks to the last unserved areas. Indeed, the basic idea of the BEED program, which I think is a better alternative to the middle mile program, was that states would receive block grants from the federal government and then use those to offset the overhead necessary to reach these last locations. So density is a problem, but it is only a problem when put up against the overhead cost of reaching these areas and getting over the geographic barriers. If you can lower that hurdle for the private sector, they will invest and they will reach the customers because you can turn a handsome profit if you're just servicing a location directly if the expense in the front end is removed for you. By the way, the BEED program also has a match requirement that comes from the private sector directly, not from the taxpayers of the county. New Jersey stands to get 200 and over 260 million dollars for private sector expansion from this program. The proposal before the commission today is both unnecessary and unlikely to succeed in its own terms. The network will crush competition instead of improving it. It will turn the internet into a poorly run public utility at great expense and it will not improve cell service or reception. We have been told that the government entering the broadband market will increase competition and drive down price, but no one can compete with the government. As we have seen and gone after gone around the country, the municipal network will either charge above market rates for ISPs to use their fiber so they can keep up maintenance costs or they will charge below market rates to consumers to undersell them. Either way, this drives ISPs out of the market or at least prevents them from expanding any further into unserved areas. Now you're back to just having one ISP yet again. Using the BEED program instead will actually help encourage competition between Verizon and Comcast in this area, which would put more organic downward pressure on price. These artificially low prices also prevent the network from turning a profit that can then be reinvested in maintenance and security and make long-term upgrades. As cyber warfare increases, for example, unstable government owned networks will be the number one target for Chinese and Russian hackers trying to compromise the whole US network. And the US Cyber Security Agency has actually warned about this vulnerability specifically. And the network proposed tonight not only fails to make last mile connections to homes and businesses, but will cost close to a million dollars per year. These numbers aren't exactly fixed. It could be more than that. As I mentioned earlier, you'll be paying that directly or indirectly as customers or in your tax dollars when it's factored into the school budget. So not only will the promised revenue never materialize, but new households will very likely not get served. And finally, I just wanted to mention that the cell reception has been promised to increase as well. But in each of these cases, the plan relies on hope, which is not a strategy, that these companies will see the wisdom of investing in the network. But I'm afraid that in practice, most of these dark fiber broadband networks around the country that have been government owned have proved to be the opposite of the movie Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will leave. So in closing, I'd like to say the slideshow did a great job of demonstrating that there is a problem. But my recommendation is to work with, not against, the companies that already serve South Jersey. Take advantage of the BEED program as a partner and do not do what other towns and cities across America have attempted and failed at. Thank you very much and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Did I say your name right?
Yes, Brian. I have a couple of questions, but first I want to thank the commissioners for having this forum so we can discuss this. One of the things I'm curious about is when you commissioned a feasibility study as commissioners, how much weight does that weigh contribute to your decision to commit to the final outcome of the project you're looking at? For example, I saw that there's a $130,000 feasibility study for possible, the purchase of 700 Archer Street in Melville, R.D. Wood School, I think. When that feasibility study comes back, when you look at it, if it comes back bad, do you say, okay, abandon the project? Or you, or how do you make that decision? The second question I have is, I understand that the county commissioned a feasibility study for this project by VCOM last year and it was abandoned. Why? And thirdly, we have a grant application, but none of the feasibility studies, one by Vinland and obviously the incomplete one by the county, was included in the grant application. And those are questions I have answers to. Thank you.
Feasibility study. Your question is, is, was there or is there a feasibility study that you rely on here?
Well, I saw that there isn't a feasibility study included in the grant application, but there was one commissioned by the, by the county and then abandoned. And then we know that there was one by Vinland itself that was denied access to by Oprah, but by the same company Bonfire, who did Cape May Counties. And Cape May County, when we, when it was Oprah, it, we got it the next night. Vinland is not releasing theirs. But then it was discussed last year at the Bleak municipalities in open public forum.
Dominic, anything you can say about a feasibility study?
Any questions or directions? I'd be happy to answer with any answer.
Okay. Would the commissioners like to answer about a feasibility study or would they prefer?
It was previously done by the previous commission and it didn't really work.
Yeah, our mics are off.
Our mics are off, so. The previous commission, the previous commission, I guess, started it, but we were not, we, most of the members here had no access to that or actually were not informed of it. There was only one member of the commission that was part of that. So I can't, we can't really, I can't answer why or why not. That alter, if Dominic has an answer to it, I get, we can ask. But I can't, members of this commission can't really answer that question. As far as Vinland, I can't answer Vinland. That's up to Vinland. So I don't know if you have an answer.
So my question would be, if, if you have other projects that you do request a feasibility study because you rely on those studies to either proceed or not proceed on a project, why was this done not done? Why wasn't it continued? Because you'll have more information that you can rely on to proceed or not proceed. And it wasn't in the grant application.
Give him the mic. We can't hear you. Give him the mic.
There was a study that was started and abandoned, as you said. It was a choice by the board of commissioners. I don't know.
How far, how long ago? How long ago, Dominic? How long ago?
It was in early 22.
I think it was last year. No, no, it wasn't.
It wasn't that, it wasn't 22.
No.
I'd have to look it up. But anyways, it started during 22.
Yeah, that's not a real good answer. Maybe we could get a better answer what I was commissioned to use. So I can't answer that myself, so.
In addition to the gentleman before me, James Madison Institute did a study of 30 government owned networks across the country. In almost every instance, they failed to bridge the digital divide. They had cost overruns and they wound up selling off these networks and left the taxpayers with huge debt. That's one of, that's the last statement I'd like to make.
And where, where was that at?
If you look at, look up the James Madison Institute, they did a survey of like 30 government owned networks across the country. It's based out of Tallahassee, Florida, not North Jersey.
Were most of those networks where they lit or black dark fiber networks?
I didn't get that for it.
Okay. That's, that's very important. That's, there is a difference.
Thank you.
Sorry, okay. Tip, I'll give you the answer to the first part of your question. We are writing you down so we can get an answer to that, so.
We will see that that question is answered.
Would you take the mic if you don't mind and speak into it? And if people have questions, maybe they would want to speak into it because it's very difficult.
Kevin Samadi.
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 I appreciate the opportunity to speak for just a few moments. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for just a few moments tonight. I would like to thank our guests from Washington DC. It was an excellent presentation. I just have two basic questions. Number one, in following up on the feasibility study, in any case, when a feasibility study is abandoned, why was it not reinvigorated? I think any organization, any government entity that's going to invest taxpayer money, any business that's going to invest money, would do a feasibility study regardless of the previous, the previous administration having it and abandoning it. And number two, my most specific question is, what reason does this board and the members of both boards, I'm speaking to both of them, what makes them feel that they can do a job of administering a public utility? It's a utility. What makes them feel that they can do it successfully? We have seen time after time after time where the government has tried to do it and fails horribly, and as Mr. Spuran also just mentioned, attached with that is the long-term financial effects that the taxpayers are burdened with. I don't see that, I don't see that as an opportunity for this board, for these two counties. I don't see it, and I'd like to know what would make us, what would make us believe that that could happen? And that's all, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Actually, there are two examples of this county. The Violin municipal utility has been a success story, which is a city-owned facility that was, I'll go into it in a second, but also government, we also have the CCUA, which has been very successful, and is also a government-run organization. So there's two with the county that points out. I'll leave the CCIA out of it, but the City of Violin, the City of Violin, when I was on council, was a, this is how government did respond, was under scrutiny, because it was coal and oil fired, and the DPA and EPA were on top of it, but they had enough foresight, the government had enough foresight, to get out of it, to get the natural, to natural gas turbines, and to solar, and it's actually honored by bank, by the solar institute across the country because it changed its whole business plan, and that was a government entity that did that. So you asked me, there is, there's two prime examples. So, can this government do it? I don't know, and we questioned it every day. People ask about a feasibility study. For over seven months, since we got in office and saw this over the horizon, it was covered at, it's like a freight train, we decided to do our homework. We met with Comcast, not Verizon, the City of Violin, Joe Haas's company, I'm forgetting some people, we met, tried to understand the project, what was done, VCOM, we met with VCOM to figure out what was going on. We questioned and went in the rooms, and every time we went into a room, yes, we got a different story depending on whose, their take of that, their interests. So we were kind of stuck, kind of like, well, every time we talked to someone, we'd get a different story, but we, but we had some pretty good people that had some, all the ball, and we started to piece things together to kind of understand what was going on, or what we were getting into. Reason why we're here today, because we were planted to kind of try to get our act again and try to think, the reason why we're here today, because in July, we got hit with the idea we got the ability to accept this grant. It was hit, here we are, we got it. Wow, and they gave us 30 days to sign off, which we got beat up on because we're rushing to get things, get people under our belt, get our own commissioners up to speed, we always promised to be transparent and upfront, so to get the people involved. Well, we asked for a 30-day extension right off the bat. They basically kind of said no, but thanks to our CFO, they allowed us a 30-day extension. That's why we got here. To August 31st, we have to decide to accept this. So, yeah, you're right, it would be great to do a feasibility study. Feasibility studies aren't done overnight, but we tried to do the best we could by meeting with different groups, different, that had some knowledge, some ability to tell us if this is a good thing or not. We, I'll add one thing to this, we have been searching for a kind of a person who was not, has no connection to this, that's probably why we're questioned, is do you have a stake in this? Because we've tried to look for someone that doesn't look to bid, has no interest to be a part of this project, has some knowledge. I dipped into my own, back to the Violin utility, to an engineer I thought would be a great person, honest, straight, give us the, actually put in a fiber-opting network in the City of Violin, which is the start of it, I said, oh, this is great. But he goes, Doug, I'm retired, I'm enjoying retirement, I'm not. He recommended some people, we brought those people in to see if that person would give us, look at it and say, hey, this is a good project, this is not. They weren't the right people, they didn't get, they, in a sense, they didn't have the overall knowledge to give us. So we're still searching for that person. I'll just leave that, because I could really go in, I, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Excuse me for a second, Mr. Johnson, would you please explain to me what we are supposed to be doing here this evening? It's my understanding that we're getting information from the public, we're not throwing blame, we're not throwing shade, this is a new grant. We want to hear what the public has to say. I don't know all the information, I don't have all the answers, I shouldn't even have that mic. We're listening to what people have to say because there are many sides to this issue, and everybody has an opinion. So could we stick to it? Now, if I'm wrong, please clarify it for me.
I believe that the board agreed, the board has agreed, that they were going to listen to questions tonight, and I know that Director Olbeck just did in fact talk, and I'm sure that perhaps the other six members, the other five members that are here from Cumberland would like to talk, and perhaps all five from San Juan would like to talk. There will come a time, each of you to say the reasons as to why you voted the way that you voted, is my fault tonight. I think, again, Director, with all due respect, Ms. Pearson is probably somebody you are very sure and you're asleep for, the way that you feel as of this time, as Mrs. Pearson said, and again, to all the commissioners, I think that this group of people is here tonight so that they can be heard, as compared to necessarily hearing from the commissioners tonight. They're going to hear from the commissioners in the future, and with all due respect, commissioners, I think that from this moment forward, as Commissioner Pearson has asked that, that we will do that. All right, so that being said, yes.
So in this, in this, in this, I challenge us to be informed of the profitability of the two entities. Are they profitable? That's a question that can be answered. You know, you're getting new points, you're reporting successful utilities, and CCUA is not a utility per se, it's a utility station, a authority that manages of utilities.
The statement that you made, that if everybody didn't hear it, was this, will this project be profitable?
No, no.
The two, the two examples that were thrown back, given back to me, were the Violin Electric Utility and the CCUA, and like you mentioned, are they profitable?
Are the Violin Electric Utility and the CCUA profitable?
That's the question. Although they're operational, it doesn't mean that they're profitable.
Joe Haas.
Good evening.
Name and town, sir?
Sure, Joe Haas from Hoopwell.
Any financial interest in any type of operation such as this, as a broadband operation of some type, sir?
Yes, I do own my own wireless internet company.
Thank you.
I just want to thank all the commissioners and everybody else for coming out tonight. Obviously, this is a rather large project that impacts a lot of people. 70% of the funding is covered by this grant, leaving 30% directly on the taxpayers. It also doesn't include any of the operational costs in the future. It also doesn't cover any overages. So with that being said, my first question, I'm sort of seeking a little bit of clarification here. Mr. Veleco, you stated that 5% of 1,728 strands is 43?
Yes, that's what I stated, but what I forgot to state was that when we looked at the strands, what we did, we assumed that because we've got a ring and we're not sure how the connections are going to be made, we took the available strands, cut them in half, so it's eight, it's eight something, like eight, 64, and then it was 5% of that.
Right, so actually, 1,728, 5% of that's 86 strands, not.
Correct, yeah, so cut it in half.
Right, it's only 50% off, it's not that big of a deal, I guess. So one thing that we don't have is the advantage of a feasibility study. We have to sell, I believe it is 86 strands the first year, and then totaling 173 by the second year of operation. The math, to keep this thing sustainable, states we have to sell roughly 120 strands of dark fiber. Since there was no feasibility study done, there was no market analysis presented to us, so we have no clue what the market actually demands. So does anybody have any idea what the actual demand and current usage for dark fiber is?
No, as you said, there was no feasibility study done, there's no demand study done, so no, that's why, and what I said earlier was, there was a, it was a conservative projection, so it was 5%, the, and then the cost to run that, again, I think there was another question about the county running it, and one of the discussions was also that the, this could be contracted out to a third party as well, to run the network as well, so, no, what you, what you saw, what was presented is what you see.
Okay, so you could easily go on Crown Castle's map, who is the largest dark fiber provider, and you'd see that in fact, between Salem and Cumberland Counties, there's nine, only nine. Any shortcoming in this project doesn't affect us, it doesn't affect our kids, it affects our kids' kids. We're talking a million-dollar expense every year for 30 years if we don't hit that sales figure. So, moving forward, another question that I can't quite figure out, does this fiber actually enter into Wilmington or Philadelphia?
It doesn't show on the map, just to keep the map more concise, but it was both Wilmington and Philadelphia, that was the plan.
So we're building fiber in three states, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Delaware?
Yes, that's the problem, that three states.
Okay, and there's no yearly lease fee? I mean, obviously, if you're occupying conduits, that's something that has to be accounted into the future. Is that part of the ongoing expenses?
That would be part of the right-of-way discussions and the right-of-way negotiations that were outlined in that.
Okay, so it's not a part of the ongoing expenses in the budget, it was left out?
Well, there was pole, there were pole expenses in there for the whole 150 miles.
Right, but obviously, if you're crossing the Delaware River twice, you can't just throw it in there and let it go. So, obviously, crossing the Delaware River is going to be a massive expense that I don't see accounted for or even talked about anywhere in this project proposal. So how, where does that factor in?
Well, with building the capital cost, one of the things that I said about the capital cost was, there was $110,000. I think, I think I had seen some email previously that indicated that 65, 85 was the, was sort of the average number in the area, so with building the capital expense, right, as far as, the final routes haven't been determined to get across the bridge, what the cost is going to be for those routes.
Okay, so that's still open. So I believe the original project expense had construction listed at $14 per foot, is that correct?
No, that's incorrect.
It's not correct, it's literally in the spreadsheet that was provided with the grant application.
It's $14 per foot of fiber, not construction cost.
So where is the cost of the construction, the actual labor in the project to put that up on the poles?
It's billed as $110,000. $110,000 per mile.
Is that, is that fiber miles or is that dead miles?
Fiber miles.
So that's 253 miles.
And which line item does that fall under? Because there's literally nothing in there about the actual labor of putting it on.
There were construction costs in the performance.
Right, the construction cost listed is $14 per foot. There's engineering fees, there's application fees, there's a million other fees, the cost of the fiber hut, but I don't see where the actual cost of the fiber going on the pole is even factored in.
No, there is definitely cost of the fiber in there, you may not see this specific line item, because the format that the NTIA gave was followed, but it was definitely in the workbooks that were developed to determine the final cost. That's where the $110,000 per foot came in, and that includes the $14, not $90,000 miles, sorry, that includes the $14 per foot for the actual cable itself.
Okay, I'd still, I've had several industry professionals look at it, they can't seem to find it anywhere. So if you could provide that offline, that would be fantastic. Last thing, we've heard 911 come up countless times, how this entire system provides public safety, it's life safety, if, basically, if the crap hits the fan and there's trees coming down, we need to be able to get communication. I don't see anywhere in any of these fiber huts, the 20 in addition to the ones at the towers, that have backup generators. What happens when the power goes out?
All the towers today are back to.
Right, the towers, but not the additional fiber huts going out.
Well, this is a dark fiber network, it's not electronics.
But if you're co-locating equipment, that equipment has to stay powered up. I mean, that's just how equipment works. So basically, if the power goes out, whatever internet carrier's in there, their stuff just stops working.
Unless they provide a battery backup for their equipment.
But then that also wouldn't cover keeping the air conditioning running.
Well, correct, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, just good to know. Lastly, how do railroad crossings factor into this?
Last question.
Yep, that's fine.
Do railroad crossings factor into it?
Yes, yes.
Well, if there's a crossing, I mean, that's got to be determined on where the crossings are and how we're going to, how you're going to have to get across it.
Right, so there's.
And they have to make the crossing.
There's an initial permit with the railroad company, and then there's a yearly ongoing maintenance with that as well, which also isn't factored anywhere in this budget. So there's a lot of shortcomings in this project that just kind of gets swept under the rug, that again, we're going to be responsible for 30 years to deal with. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, please call me Larry. My name is Larry Spilek, I'm actually from Washington DC, but I am a telecommunications specialist. I've spent 30 years in this business, I've spent time at the Office of General Counsel of the FCC, been running, I work for a think tank called the Phoenix Center for Advanced Legal and Economic Public Policy Studies. What sets us apart, we're not an advocacy group, is that we just, when my mom asked me what I do for a living, she said I write term papers for a living. But our term papers are actually published in refereed academic journals, which means they've gone through third-party peer review to make sure that we are right or wrong. And probably we've, without bragging a bit, we've probably, nobody's done the amount of papers that we've done on municipal broadband. In fact, all this is available on our website, on the Social Science Research Network, and I would commend you, in fact, our 100-page paper, ironically called The Law and Economics of Municipal Broadband, you can download. It's a lot of second semester stuff, but a lot of the stuff I'm going to talk about today comes from this, okay? Whether, there are some uni projects that work, there are some uni projects that do not, but this is a very sophisticated thing. And the problem with municipal networks, really, is that there's no such thing as free lunch, right? You go in, I admire the congressman, I got you a grant, fantastic, but is that grant going to be enough? And one of the things that we show in our work is, once you get that initial stuff, it is just a perpetual subsidy to keep these things going, okay? You can look at the municipal broadband network in Chattanooga, which was basically subsidized by the Recovery Act after, in the Obama administration, it is constant subsidy. Because... Because unlike the electric utility network, which is a monopoly, and you've got captive ratepayers, broadband is competitive. And in a broad, in any market, there's an equilibrium, right? The equilibrium might be two, which means the third person goes out of business. It might be one, which means if you have two, somebody goes out of business, and if there's none, that's why we have subsidies. And that's what we're all coming back to. So, we're asked here to look at two projects. One is the middle-mile network, and the other one is the mini broadband network. Let's first talk about the middle-mile project. Not to put too point, a point on it, but the notion that you think that an ISP is going to come in and go, "Oh, my goodness, it's a new middle-mile network, that they're not going to do it themselves," is wishful thinking. It is going to be money wasted. There is long, it is, there's a long history to this. In fact, I mean, we were doing some research a while back, after the Recovery Act, again, this is on the Obama administration's, up in Buffalo, somebody discovered a middle-mile network that they had forgotten for 12 years. What's this? It's a middle-mile network. They built it, they forgot about it. So, it's unnecessary, and again, you will probably, the cost will exceed the benefits for that. Now, let's talk about the mini broadband network. The real issue that comes up with municipal broadband is the issue of cross-subsidization, okay? This has happened time and time again, because broadband is competitive, electric utility is not. Very often, when the mini broadband network goes bust, who ends up paying? The captive ratepayers. That's the problem. And you know when that happens? Electricity rates go up. That happened in Opelika, Alabama. I can give you, we actually did a paper on that, which was published in a peer-reviewed journal, Energy Economics. This is a very serious thing. I know you guys have a lot of problems with energy prices up here in, in New Jersey, and if these projects go bust, it's the captive electricity ratepayers who are going to end up paying for this. And you can look at, you know, there's hundreds of examples, some work, some don't. Again, you can look at Opelika, people, that was Alabama. The reason why I say that is my partner, who's our chief economist, lives in Alabama, and he was just completely disgusted by the amount of money that people were left on the hook for this stuff. You can find that, without going into sort of detail. So, you guys are going to have to make some very hard decisions. Some might work, some might not. You're also probably not going to get a labor effect. We looked at the Chattanooga plant, there was a Chattanooga gond that was built, and the mayor said, "Oh, my God, look at all the jobs that we got." Well, we did an economic study of that, and guess what? You know what the total number was? Six. Because people didn't move, you're not, people aren't going to move somewhere because you have broadband. So, it's business stealing, not business migration, okay? Because everybody else is building broadband. So, the idea that somebody's going to move, "I really want to come out here," it's, it's not how life works. So, going back to my, I know, just one last point, going back to the equal, to the equilibrium point, if you end up having, according to FCC data, and there are problems with FCC data, but there's plenty of coverage here, and the question is, are you going to have enough demand to sustain a brand-new municipal network? The answer is probably not. I was actually very surprised to hear that no feasibility study was conducted. That should be your first inquiry, before you just accept money. Because the US is just littered with people, they get the initial money, and then the taxpayers are stuck with the bag. So, again, you guys can do what you want, it's your money, your time, the record, the, in the history of municipal broadband networks is not very rosy. There are some good examples, there are a lot more failures. So, again, you can take a look at our webpage, there's a whole section called Municipal Broadband, and I thank you for your time.
All right, everyone, first break, let's come back at 7 o'clock sharp. Thank you.
Lee Rosemary.
Becky, just like the girls. That's correct.
Ms. Becky, let's wait just one second. Ms. Becky. Ms. Becky, Rosemary Becky. All right. Ms. Becky, your full name and the town that you hail from?
Sure, I am Rosemary Becky and I am from Milburn, New Jersey.
And do you have any financial interest in an broadband type company of any, of any sort?
I do not.
Hear from you.
Hi there, good evening and thank you for having me this evening. I'm Rosemary Becky, I'm a tax lawyer, but I'm also the president and founder of Jersey First. And to tell you a little bit about Jersey First, we are an advocacy organization and we fight for hardworking New Jerseyans. We strive to promote economic policies that protect tax dollars and reject wasteful spending. Our mission is to make New Jersey a better place for all of us to live, learn, work, and retire. So I want to make myself very clear from the start. Jersey First absolutely supports universal access to broadband for all of New Jersey. I'm here today to oppose the Cumberland County's Improvement Authority's government-owned broadband plan as it puts county taxpayers at financial risk. While it may sound like a great idea, these taxpayer-funded projects most often fail, as we've already heard, and leave taxpayers footing the bill. To put it simply, government entities are simply not well-equipped to successfully build and maintain an evolving broadband network. As the Taxpayer Protection Alliance will testify shortly to, the majority of GONs have resulted in massive debt, waste, and broken promises. Cumberland County officials should learn from the mistakes of other communities and reject well-intended but poorly-planned government-owned broadband networks. These projects put taxpayer dollars at risk and leave hard-working families footing the bill at a time when they can least afford it. In California, the state currently faces higher-than-expected construction costs, a 40% overrun in costs as it works to complete the state's middle-mile network. And many more miles of fiber will be needed than originally planned. Finally, taxpayers clearly do not want their money wasted on risky government broadband networks. To that point, Jersey First recently conducted an education campaign throughout the city of Vineland. We knocked on doors in every neighborhood in Vineland to inform residents about the city's recent proposal to fund a government-owned broadband network. What we heard from the families in Vineland, and overwhelmingly 71% of them said that they were opposed to government broadband. And several thousand residents pledged to sign a card saying they opposed spending their tax dollars on unnecessary, unnecessary government-owned broadband networks. Vineland residents are speaking out on how their elected officials should prioritize spending their hard-earned money, and an overwhelming majority opposed a taxpayer-funded broadband network. Jersey First always advocates for leveraging the expertise from the private sector through public-private partnerships. If you truly want to close the digital divide, I encourage you to work to partner with experienced ISPs to reach the relatively few communities that lack, that lack broadband access. History has shown that private-public partnerships are a cost-effective solution for both taxpayers and governments to solve these kinds of problems. Just like New Jersey's hard-working families, government officials must prioritize their spending and resources. We cannot afford to gamble hard-working tax dollars on risky and wasteful government-owned networks. For these reasons, I ask the commissioners to put taxpayers first and rethink this proposal. Thank you.
Dan Cevikas.
Hello, hello. My name is Dan Cevikas. I currently reside in Washington DC, though I feel it's worth noting before that I lived where I was born and raised, in Westfield, New Jersey.
Any, any interest in any broadband or other cable-type company?
No, not directly.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my, as I just said, my name is Dan Cevikas. I am the Director of Policy for the Taxpayers Protection Alliance, henceforth known as TPA. As our name aptly suggests, we are a taxpayer watchdog group that seeks to educate the public on the effects of government policy and to hold policymakers accountable for those effects. We strive to reduce debts and deficits and the impacts that government spending and regulation have on everyday taxpayers. I'll be speaking in this capacity to oppose the use of federal grant money for this middle-mile project. As a New Jersey native and longtime resident myself, I've worked and gotten the opportunity to speak with town and county lawmakers and have seen the good that bodies like this can do for New Jersey constituents. So I have little doubt as to the good intentions of this board when it comes to considering middle-mile broadband. However, there's no such thing as free money from the federal government. Even if the federal government foots the bill, or rather foots 70% of the bill initially, middle, middle-mile broadband deployments such as these come with hidden costs that will eventually and undoubtedly land on Cumberland and Salem County residents. To cite just one example, the Kentucky Wired Project was a middle-mile project in which taxpayers were only meant to be responsible for $30 million. However, after taking advantage of tax-exempt bonds, the costs and scope of the project slowly ballooned and costs shifted more and more to Kentucky taxpayers until the price tag came out to a staggering $1.5 billion with a B. Middle-mile broadband also misses the mark in connecting consumers. It is incumbent upon existing providers, and we saw a few boldly colored maps to that effect, is incumbent upon existing providers to connect the last mile to actual homes and businesses in Cumberland and Salem Counties. According to available data across the United States, only a small sliver of the country lacks access to middle-mile, whereas a broader portion lacks access to the last mile, which is where the focus should lie. Further, given that providers typically have their own infrastructure in place, again, I refer to the maps that we saw, they're often unable or unwilling to connect to such government-owned middle-mile networks, making them often a duplicative waste of time and energy. There are also reports that Vineland, the county seat of Cumberland, has expressed interest in forming its own government-owned network, previously and henceforth referred to as GONs or G-O-Ns. Two, TPA has published two reports entitled Gone With The Wind and Gone With The Wind 2. Frankly, taxpayers do care. I'm neither, I'm not able to take credit for the names of either of those, but they detail the failures of such government-owned networks. They often fail to reach their connectivity goals and leave taxpayers holding the bag. On average, the GONs that we studied reached only about 40% of the residents in the end. A number of these municipalities had to sell their operations at a substantial loss, and again, taxpayers, like those in Cumberland and Salem Counties, ended up holding the bag. If this middle-mile becomes dependent on GONs to connect residents, the county will be taking a massive gamble with their constituents' taxpayer dollars. Once again, TPA acknowledges the worthiness of connecting people and closing the digital divide and acknowledges the vast difficulty in doing so. However, as it pertains to this issue, Cumberland and Salem residents will not be well-served by this program, however tempting the allure of supposedly free federal millions may seem. There are fiscal consequences down the road, and we sincerely hope that you will join us in protecting your taxpayers from having to bear the brunt of it. Thank you.
I do believe that Mr. Bonner, who signed up to speak next, Eddie, I don't think he's still here, Mindy Petroni.
Good evening. Mindy Petroni, Hopewell Township. I have zero ties to an internet service provider, nor am I bought by special interests. I do want to make a point, though, that at the presenter, Mr. Veleco is a paid consultant in the county. He was hired to do the broadband study, which was abandoned, and it was a no-bid contract. I have followed the broadband project since 2021, when the Cumberland County Utilities Authority Board was almost hijacked for monetization for this project. Now, the person that's going to be in charge, or the entity, has just switched to another county entity, which we are currently in lawsuits with over a failed jail project. So I have issue trying to go forward with someone we already have had financial problems with. I sent each commissioner a link today. It's a YouTube video of a seminar that was held down in Atlantic City by the League of Municipalities. The seminar was named Money Accessing Broadband Funding. A gentleman by the name of Ed McManaman of McManaman, Scotland and Baumann, said he's working with the city of Vineland. The firm should be familiar to the Cumberland County Board, it's our bond counsel. Ed says, I quote, "They had a feasibility stud, study done by a company called Bonfire. It was very comprehensive. It looks to me that it's financially challenging to build their own network even when they have an electric company that exists. The analysis is designed to try to figure out if it's financially viable." End of quote. An Oprah request for the feasibility study for Vineland was denied to me and another. The public has a right to know the information in that study if Vineland is going to be a proposed internet service provider that will lease the middle-mile. At the last county commissioners' meeting, there was a passing of an internet service provider that is going to carry the maintenance costs of the entire middle-mile through a shared service. I'm pretty sure a shared service means it's with another governmental entity. The seminar that I just referred to, the speaker, the attorney, said to, I'm sorry, the speaker at the seminar suggested to the attorney, Ed, that he review the city of Chattanooga, Tennessee, as a template of an electric company that also became an internet service provider. Chattanooga's project costs $300 million, $390 million, funded by $220 million in local revenue bonds, $111 million from a federal grant, and a $50 million loan from the municipality's electric division. In my world, that's a template for debt. My concern is, who will benefit from the middle-mile? Bridgeton, Vineland, and Millville are close to 100% covered. They do not have enough service areas of, or service gaps to warrant the B funds. Upper Deerfield, Stowe Creek, Shiloh, and Greenwich are now covered 100%. Hopewell and Morris River will be by the spring of 2024. This leaves Lawrence Township, Fairfield Downs, Commercial, and Deerfield, and they are the more rural areas that will be better served with the B grants. That's the last mile coverage. In an email dated November the 3rd of 2022, Mr. Velasquez stated, quote, "Middle-mile infrastructure is cost prohibitive. It is not worth it for them," the internet service providers, "to make this investment for such a small user base." End of quote. Wow. What in heaven's name makes this project worth it for the county to do so? Your statement, sir, spoke volumes. In an email dated July the 6th, 2023, from the director, quote, "I will give you one more example. City of Vineland pays for a run of 47 miles to deep-water Salem County. They paid for every foot. I believe the county system may provide a better bottom line for the city." When in heaven's name is a county board worried about providing a better bottom line for the city of Vineland? Five of you on the county board are residents of Vineland. I think that it's a conflict of interest if you're approaching this monstrosity this way. If you run out of money building this redundant system, taxpayers are on the hook. If no one rents the network, taxpayers are on the hook. Maintenance costs will be on the backs of taxpayers. Why are you playing with the finances of the poorest county in New Jersey? To quote Ronald Reagan, I listened to Congressman Van Drew this morning, and he misquoted Ronald Reagan. The quote, one second, the most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." Thank you.
Sandra Acevedo.
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. What, how will?
No interest in a?
Oh, no, nothing.
Thank you.
How will the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, how do they plan to guard against the wasteful spending that is inherent in past to grants such as this one? That's my first question. The second one is, will the connection costs for all of the ISP providers be the same? And is the, is the inter-county, inter-county connection, will they still have an ISP provider charge related to that, or is that something that would be free to the inter-count?
Now, my thought, my, my thought is, the first two questions, we will make sure are answered. The last question, can you answer that, please, Dommett?
And I apologize, the last question, there was two questions, I think, that I could answer.
The, the inter-county connection, will the inter-county connection still have an ISP provider charge attached to it, or is that, will that be free to the, to the, to the, you know, the, the schools, the libraries, the county offices, you know, things like that?
The intro, okay, yeah, I was, intro county, so within each county. They've got connections today to the commercial providers, and they've got the opportunity to move over to this network, and it would be savings. I guess it's going to be determined by the board if they were charged for it or not. My assumption is, is that, you know, it's low or no cost.
And the other two, I'll get, Acevedo? The other two questions answered, I'll, I'll, I'll go lead.
If you can repeat the two questions, or if, if, Kim, you can repeat the first question, please.
How will the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners guard against wasteful spending? And I believe the second question was, will connection costs of ISP providers be the same?
I can answer the second one. The, in the notes of funding opportunity and the grant that was awarded, and one of the things that was in the presentation is that the access to the network has to be offered on a non-discriminatory basis, which means everyone has to get it the same rate. So you can't try to ask the one provider and then force what other.
The first question again was, how will?
How will the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners guard against wasteful spending?
How will the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners guard against wasteful spending? And I believe, Ms. Acevedo, that is one that will have to be answered by the commission, as I said in the beginning. We will make sure that that's sent to everyone who's given an email address.
Thank you.
Danielle Carroll.
Good evening, Danielle Carroll from Vineland.
Any interest in?
No, no interest, I'm a high school English teacher, so I'm not really good with numbers because English is my base, not math, but I'm looking at the pro forma capital expenses, where it talks about the $136,000 per mile, and then the $110,000 per mile. And when you start to look at 253 miles, times that, and you add both of those totals together, it's about $62 million for this project. Less the 24 from the grant, leaves you with about $38,000, $38 million left, minus the $10 million match and in kind, so it's almost another $30 million left over to pay. And that's just this part of this project. I mean, I'm thinking, how will this be paid? Will our county taxes go up? Will my city taxes go up? Will people's townships' taxes go up? What's going to happen here? Because it's already missing the mark. So I'm just looking at the, the numbers, how I look at it, and I'm just a regular person in Cumberland County, not a tax person, not a math person. I do see a math teacher here that I work with, so. And my question is, are there any other neighboring counties doing the same thing? Is Atlantic doing it? Is Cape May? Burlington? I don't know, keep creeping up. Does each county have a middle mile? And then the end mile? I know, when I think about what happened 2020, when the schools shut down, the world shut down, it was like, rush, 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 two weeks before the school was going to shut down, can the kids get online? Does everybody have access? Some did, some didn't, some kids could only use phones, and it was difficult. But you can't rush, you have to take your time. And the numbers seem to tell you to take your time. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Nancy Ridgeway.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Township, and I want to welcome everybody this evening. I'm so glad we had so many visitors from out of state. And thank you all for coming out, and I have no interest in broadband. Okay? And I have no interest in the internet. I filled out a survey for the CCIA, which nobody has that study. Maybe that's why you don't have it, is because so many people in Vineland filled out the survey and said, "We don't want internet." So somehow it got pushed under the table and said, you know, "We're not going to listen to these people, because they don't know what they're talking about." Well, sometimes people come, and they do know what they're talking about. Now, I, I was just looking to see if I could find it again. Yesterday, I read the application for this grant. I found it highly interesting. I can't remember everything I read, I think it was like 117 pages or something, but I read the whole thing. I saw some people's resumes in there, and it was very interesting. A lot of things was repeated over and over, and I did read something about Vineland. But that was interesting to read it. If you all have, haven't read it, I think you should read that application. And one question I have about it, if you do accept this grant, and you don't do it according to the federal regulations, because there's always federal regulations with everything, what happens if you have to pay it back because you didn't do it right? Another thing I read today is, it was about a lawsuit that the county has, it was dated August the 14th, which was yesterday, so it was very new. And I read it, I don't know how many pages it was, it took me over an hour to read it. Anyway, it's a court case that the Cumberland County, I can't say it's Young County, because it's Cumberland County. The Cumberland County has against CCJ Energy and the CCIA of Cumberland County, that's the Cumberland County Improvement Authority. And I was reading all this writing and all these things that went wrong with this contract that we had with this energy company for the new jail. And this board is talking about allowing the CCIA to run this broadband project? Oh, I kind of want to pull my hair out. The other thing is, we have a commissioner, the director as a matter of fact, that says this feasibility study wasn't on his watch. this feasibility study wasn't on his watch, or got tossed under the table because he wasn't in charge when it was happening. And I'd just like to know where he was for the three years that he was on this board before he became director. And I guess that's really my basic question. Where was he? He was on the board for three years before he became director. Was he listening? Did he bring anything from those previous three years to the table for everybody else? Thank you.
Louise Digpen.
No, I don't have any interest except for paying my Comcast bill, which is very high, by the way. I came tonight to learn more about the middle mile project. And I don't think I'm going to go home with much more than what I came with. But I do know that- my daughter's a schoolteacher in Salem County, and I do know that when the pandemic came, there were a lot of students that did not have broadband and could not access school the way they could. And this whole thing brought a question to my mind is, why do we have representatives from Washington DC come to little old South Jersey to talk to us against the project? I'm a little paranoid, I guess. And North Jersey. So, I mean, I'm no- I'm not better informed than I was when I came, except that I think we need more time, as the English teacher said, to understand what we're getting into and what we really need to do. And there should have been hearings sooner than this. But I'm just a little guy. And that's all I have to say.
Dr. Per- Dr. Perella.
Thank you, Dr. Joey Perella, City of Vineland. And no, I do not have any financial interest in this plan. I kind of think I wish I had listened to everyone else before signing up on the list, because it sounds like for most of the speakers here tonight, I'm going to sort of come down on the opposite side of this issue. It does bother me the speed at which our county commissioners have had to make this decision. 30 days for a grant that is this large, it does feel rushed. And even if there was an extension, without the ability to do, some of the feasibility studies that are normally done, are done, concern me. However, having grown up in Cumberland County, driven around this county, worked in all parts of this county, I do know that there are many areas here in Cumberland and Salem County that do not have the access that we need to high-speed internet or cellular service. I've had more dropped calls than I can imagine driving around. Mr. Sheriff, that was with hands-free device when I was on the cell phone. So we know that there's a lack of service here that exists in our communities. And as a healthcare provider, there's two barriers that I, that we face in my profession, and that is a geographic one, doctors are here, patients are there, how do we bring them together? And a financial one, doctors are here, patients are here, but patients can't afford our services. And while I do feel like this grant does solve one of the geographical barriers that exists in broadband, I am concerned, is it going to address that financial one that exists as well? If it does bring these services to some of the communities here in our rural areas, are we going to be able to also offer it at an affordable rate that the consumers are going to be able to pay? Even in some of our communities where we do have nearly universal coverage, there are many people who are left behind, who aren't able to afford Comcast or Verizon rates. And I think there is more that as a community, as a county government, we can be doing to bring them affordable service. I think this is a very scary proposal that's in front of all of us. And then I think that fear is driving some of us to want to say no. Without much evidence to the contrary, because this is not an area where I'm in expertise, I deal with teeth, that's kind of my realm. Despite the unknowns here, despite the fear, I think it is smart that as a community, both Salem and Cumberland County, kind of take this leap of faith, accept this grant, and begin the work to build out this middle-mile broadband internet. Moving forward in the 21st century, if we're going to be a community that is able to retain our residents and attract new residents, we need to have high-speed internet universally accessible throughout the county. People my age grew up online. Asking us to not have high-speed internet, whether it's for work or for play, is like asking us to go without electricity. And I don't think anyone in this room would want to live without electricity. Thank you.
Steve Soloff.
Steve Soloff from Vineland, and no, no interest in broadband financially. As a point of clarification, I believe there's a requirement within the middle-mile grant to require letters of commitments from the ISPs to do the end-mile service. Do we actually have letters of commitment from the ISPs?
The question is, do we have letters of commitment from ISP, which would be Internet Service Provider?
Yeah.
I'm not aware specifically of the requirement to have the letters of commitment, but there were letters of support in filed the application.
I saw it in an FAQ about the middle-mile grant, might be worth double checking, because that would clarify whether or not the end mile would actually happen.
Of the impact of that.
Okay, sure. Along similar lines, we've heard several times about the middle-mile grant versus end-mile programs like the BE program, which frames it as like an either-or choice. But at the beginning of tonight, Congressman Van Drew brought up a point that if we set the middle-mile infrastructure in place, that will help us gain access to end-mile grant programs. Do we have any verification if we can actually do both types of programs?
Congressman brought it up. No answer to that.
Gotcha. Let me just double check if I got everything. Oh, and I guess along the same lines, there's been several concerns brought up about the long-range maintenance costs. I guess, would we know if there's any access to subsidized grant money to help us maintain the infrastructure in the future? Or if we know it's reasonably within the county budget to maintain those upkeep costs?
The representative says that he does not have an answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Bob Goodell.
Not to pronounce Goodell, but you can call me Bob. And no, I don't have any interest in making any money on the internet. But I do have an interest in what I've seen as inadequacies. Especially during COVID, it became more pronounced. I went to a local restaurant, and it looked like it was packed. And when I went inside, there was hardly anybody in there. But it was because people were in their car getting a signal from the business, because they didn't have one at home. And that proved to me a problem, even in places where, and I'm not trying to cause any trouble, but somebody said, "We have 100% coverage, and we're going to have 100," we're not. It's not 100%. And in some places, it's worse than others, and it goes in and out. And as far as the people from out of town, I'm a suspicious person. Who paid for them to come here? And what are their real interests in this to me against it? The only people I can see who would be against it is Comcast. And so I would be suspicious of that. And so my two questions, well, it's one. To the commissioners, does any, I have, I know of companies who have not done business here because of the electrical grid in some areas. And they wanted to come here and provide jobs, and then they didn't. Is that the same with broadband and having enough access to the internet? And have we lost business and jobs because we don't have it? And final statement is, look, this is $24 million, and we don't have time. And I think we need to help our kids out and our businesses, and so I'm for it.
Kathy Ostino. Kathy Ostino. Jeanne Mark. Robin Walton.
Good evening, my name is Robin Walton. Do not have any interest financially with Comcast, although I do spend a lot of money every time I go on the internet. For the sake of the record, I am the Senior Vice President of Government and External Affairs for Inspira Health. And Inspira Health is the region's leading network of healthcare providers delivering a continuum of full care from primary to acute to, of course, advanced care services in Cumberland, Salem, Gloucester, Camden, and Atlantic Counties. I want to start out by saying, I do not intend to advocate either way, but stand up here today just to offer a bit of awareness as we have this conversation on behalf of Inspira. And every three years, Inspira Health assesses the residents within the service region for its Community Health Needs Assessment. And our Community Health Needs Assessment is really a helpful tool that reflects community members' views on health needs in our communities and helps inform us of critical issues that impact health and wellness of residents within our service region. One of the top priorities out of the five that we saw come out of our 2022 and to 2024 Community Health Needs Assessment is accessibility, affordability, and availability of care. Consequently, telehealth is one of our key strategies to reduce barriers to receiving care, most specifically in rural communities. According to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, people who live in rural areas in the United States are more likely than urban residents to die prematurely. Five of the leading causes of death that relate to more so living in urban and rural areas as opposed to urban are heart disease, cancer, unintentional injury, chronic lower respiratory disease, and stroke. Telehealth means better monitoring, improving patients' quality of life, and reducing hospital admissions and death from chronic disease. It also allows providers access to a growing number of online clinical services. This measure can effectively, through telehealth, we can effectively improve health outcomes on our state's county rankings in both Salem and Cumberland County, because telehealth in rural areas can decrease challenges to patient encounters, such as transportation related to travel to specialty care, and also allowing physicians to effectively monitor their patients who have chronic diseases. We're grateful for the opportunity today to be able to participate in the conversation. And at the end of the day, whatever way it all goes, we just want to make sure that we are bringing awareness to issues that, as we think about social determinants of health, have a direct correlation to our quality of life in Cumberland and Salem County. Thank you.
Dan Panino.
Good evening. I don't have any special interest in the internet connections. All that I've heard tonight is no answers on a lot of questions, over and over and over. When I pay my bills, I have my answers. When you pay your bills, do you have your answers? I think you do. The gentlemen that spoke tonight from Washington, their advocacy groups are to protect our dollars in our pockets. To answer your question, I think they were here. If they had an alternative reason for anything else, I think they should have answered that in a different way. The August 31st is a very pressing time. We have, what, half a month left? And to make that kind of decision for $34 million, I think that's a, quite a a pressing thing for yous to do. And if there is a maintenance cost that ranges beyond that, I think yous need to look at that. And you need to look at the amount of people. I live in a rural area, and we have some dropped calls. But we put up with that. I don't know if that's a cause for spending the amount of money that we're looking at here. So I guess my answer is, I would say, you need to have a lot more time to look at this. Excuse me? Oh, okay.
Somebody sneezed.
Jostled my mind there. So my answer is, for this, is to no. On a lot, on a lot of different levels. Thank you.
Is it Paula Thibodeau? Paula Thibodeau. Lucinda Bernstein. Lucinda Bernstein.
Thank you for turning this way. Because I like to look at people when I'm talking to them. Do you hear me okay?
Nope.
Okay. Is it off? Can you hear me better?
No.
No? Thank you. My name is Lucinda Bernstein, I live in Hopewell. I am not attached to any internet company. And I got information last night about this meeting and decided to come out and make a sacrifice of my time that I need to spend with my family. Because if you don't know it's broken, you can't fix it. And I'm here listening. And I first want to stop and say- And I first want to stop and say, I appreciate hearing what Erwin, Larry, and Dan had to say. They've made it their life work to, to protect the taxpayers. Um, Rosemary and Mindy, I appreciate the time you spend to try to protect your fellow um neighbors and friends in protecting our community from flawed ideas. I don't know you, I didn't get to hear very much of what you have to say, but I do know that you're a paid consultant. So you have a vested interest in, in convincing these people that this is what Cumberland County needs. But what I'd like to say is, just from the brief time I've been here, it's obvious that there are a lot of flawed ideas going on here. Um, I typically spend time preparing before I come to something like this, but I got a phone call last night that this was happening and I made time to come here in my busy schedule to give you my opinion. I, I wanna, I, while we were sitting here, I was thinking about these flawed ideas and I, it jogged my thoughts, like, this sounds like my college professor. I can hear his voice talking about a hypothesis. Hypotheses are just guesses. And I looked it up while I was sitting there and it said, "It's an explanation made on the basis of limited evidence as a starting point for further investigation." And it is obvious that further investigation needs to take place. And we need to see the yellow light on the traffic light proceed with caution. And you might need to see the red light stop. Um, it really concerned me that this system is vulnerable to Chinese and Russian hacking. No matter what system we're on, we're vulnerable to that. I personally um experienced uh being hacked by a Chinese company because I bought something off Facebook and they used my credit card. I didn't get what I ordered, but they ordered things for them. I've been hacked multiple times and it's something for you to think about. We got, my family, my husband got hacked by Experian. Like, it's a serious, serious issue, but that's not what I came to talk to you about. I want to tell you that, I'll take my mask off for a minute because I want to, I want you to see my face. I am the face of your constituents. I am a regular person, I have worked hard my entire life. I had humble beginnings on my grandparents' and uncle's farms. I have worked hard my entire life. I have devoted the last thirty-two months, thirty-two years of my life to the betterment of children working in the school-based youth services programs in Cumberland County. I want to speak to whoever said that they didn't have internet. Some students didn't have it, but the schools provided it. Every single student had access to internet in the schools I move in. So, yes, it might have been a little bit of a struggle, but we already have services and by the maps, it looked like there's quite a few homes already connected. But the face I want you to remember is the worker bee. I've been a worker bee my whole life. And I, as I aged, I understood the Sunday dinner conversations between my grandparents and father and uncles when they complained about taxes and, and how, even all the way down to local government, how it's just so easy to spend other people's money. And I want you to know that I come from a two-parent, a two-person household of income. We have two incomes. And I, we recently experienced the joy of paying our house off. We are paid off on our house because we have lived very conservatively and lived within our means and didn't ask anybody else to pay for it for us. But we still have to crack a nut of over a thousand dollars a month to pay for taxes and homeowner's insurance. That being said, I want you to know that being the worker bee, it feels more like we're sheep. And, and the government and, and local government, they just want to shear the wool off of us and there's, there's not much wool left. We are tired. I take the privilege of voting very seriously, I was raised that way. And while I'm a conservative person, I try to vote for whoever will do the best job for our entire community. So I do cross the aisle sometimes. And when I look at your faces, you might not know me, but I looked you up and I voted for some of you that are sitting at this table today. And I'm asking you to consider that you were given a responsibility. You accepted the responsibility to work for every single person in the community, not just business, not just big business. It's us, it's, and, and in our community, we're very, we're a struggling community. There are very few worker bees that are in the community where we actually make tax dollars from. So I would say to you that that, that number is growing. I mean, growing less, that, the number of worker bees is growing less. And the burden is, is really big on the families that are left. That you're gonna, you, it's so easy to spend other people's money without feeling the sacrifice. It is getting harder and harder for us to meet the demands of our very conservative life with our salaries because of all the different people that want your money. And, and I'm asking you to think of our community that there are far greater issues than broadband for our community. We are a broken community. I worked with students for many years, I want to make this last point, sir. I worked for students, with students for many years. We have a lot of broken families out there. There's a lot of serious issues like the growing gun violence, violence in general, drugs. It's, it's, it's almost ludicrous that we're worried about broadband when we have so much of it already. And nobody's talking about the crime or, or the violence or children killing children. It's serious. So please, remember my face, remember the people in your neighborhood. Take a real look past this carrot of thirty-four million dollars. It's, it's not prudent to move forward right now. You need to do your due diligence and work for the entire community, not just business. And I appreciate this opportunity that I went a little bit over. Um, and I also want to thank Michael Testa for being here. Um, I think that speaks volumes that our representative is here to listen to everyone speak. And, and I, and I want you to know the same thing. We're tired, we're weak, we're growing weaker. And it makes me want to say, honey, take me out of Cumberland County. I'm tired, I'm tired of dealing with everything we have to deal with here. And this just screams private interest, it really does. So please, I use my privilege to vote for you. I will, uh, to vote for you, please use that responsibility wisely. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Be well, everybody.
LaRue, LaRue Smith. Letting the commissioners know, there are five remaining names and it is about time to take a break. Should we just go straight through and finish?
Yes.
Yes, okay. LaRue Smith.
Hello, sir, my name is LaRae Smith.
I'm sorry, LaRae Smith.
Just to correct you there. Good evening, everyone.
Very sorry.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for having this special uh meeting and CC Tech for hosting it. Wonderful building, Jerry Velasquez. Um, I'm bringing you greetings from commercial township, one of the small areas on the map that you probably don't drop service, can't get service, you won't get service depending on the coverage that you have. We're a small municipality, but also we're large in that we were the capital of the oyster industry. So therefore, realistically, some of the areas on the map that have all the red and have all the broadband, we did come through COVID to school systems with getting them technology and services so that they could actually be able to continue their education. My concerns though tonight would be, first off, is in areas, in small areas, it's a lot of wetlands in Marstown, commercial, down, those areas. I looked it up, I was concerned about the utility poles or is it going to run underground? Because underground, the wetlands would be an issue. But then if you run it off the utility poles, our poles ride out because of the wetlands and because of the grounds. So your estimation of three hundred approximately poles to that you would possibly have to do, you may want to up that number because in those areas, small areas like that, that would definitely be a hindrance. That would be a big concern, the little small areas that are on the map because most of that area is wetlands. The second thing that I would talk about is staffing. And I looked at that and I understand, it is a need, we do know that. There's definitely a need. Big areas, violent Millville, Bridgeton may have the broader ban and the bigger services. The small areas may need to catch up and we may need something and may start out on a smaller scale. But Commissioners, you have a big task because this is a lot of money on the table and our county needs the money. We need that money to help and get some structure going and try it out. I'm not to say good or bad, but these are just some concerns that I want you to keep in your mind. With the staffing, are those going to be union or non-union jobs? Are the people already promised jobs already? Are you going to put an application out to county residents in Salem and Cumberland for those six positions or have they already been promised? Like a lot of things have been done when you bring in companies from outside and then the people and the residents within the community never have an opportunity to apply or even to be concerned, uh, interviewed for those positions. So Commissioners, that's a concern, that's a big concern. And the last thing that's a concern is long-term. Economic development was my specialty, I learned from the best under Jerry. Feasibility study, you probably have one. Whether you do or you don't, of course, that's the key because that breaks down the biggest component of everything. But realistically, you've got seventy percent here, thirty percent here. When you put those two together, the burden of the thirty percent is your taxpayers. The burden of the taxpayers. So in small little rural areas, commercial down, those are most of your glass factory workers and people that work in uh middle-range income jobs. Some of the other situations may be higher-income jobs, higher wages, so they may, their affordability may be there. But in commercial township, the average oyster person who worked, their social security check is nine hundred dollars. After they pay, if they have a mortgage or may not have a mortgage, the tax base down there, we bonded out the taxes for the veterans park and for the school and for everything else. So we're pretty much broke. So if you have to float a bond to pay for some things that's going on or overage in some of the fees, that, that, that's the burden of those social security residents who picked oysters and helped that industry grow. And right now, they're not concerned about broadband. Right now, they just need to make sure they put some food on the table and have enough to manage to get through from month to month to month. So long-term, the financial burden will be on the taxpayers. So that's something that you should really consider and look at. Broadband, taxpayers, broadband, taxpayers. The people have spoken, you can take your notes and go into executive session and discuss it, but ultimately you have to make this decision, you're almost out of time. So the time is, take every one of those conversations, and I wrote down names myself, of what people have said, just to jog my memory. But take the responsibility to realize that this is serious, but people did come out today to voice their opinions. Please respect those opinions, due diligence. You've done your homework, you probably have all the materials in front of you. But please, just remember that right now, Cumberland County, Salem County, we're, we're some of the lowest income people around in counties around. So if we continue to have to float bonds and pay more, it's just going to keep driving things down. Anytime a Comcast bill is two hundred and some dollars a month for basic cable, seniors that get nine hundred dollars a month, what's important? Food or Comcast? Thank you.
Justin, and I'm having a hard time making out.
Justin Lampy, Vonland, no financial interest in internet. Thank you for the time. Uh, so like, we've heard the stories of like how there's underserved and unserved communities who don't have access to internet, that's what this is all about. Is this expanding the infrastructure so they can, so an ISP like Comcast or Verizon could connect somebody to service? Or is it, are we talking about like a whole other entity where the municipality is going to be providing service to the end user?
Yeah, so I did notice the funding opportunity was in the one slide. Basically, the network would have to be offered on a non-discriminatory basis. So Comcast, Verizon, anyone else, T-Mobile, anyone that wants to come in without access to network, it's an open access network. So anyone can use it, any company that wants to, you know, get access to the network.
Okay, so like, it's going to like connect people who don't have the opportunity for internet?
I'm going to follow the question.
Like, we have these unserved, underserved communities who can't get internet connections. Like, if we vote for this and it comes in and we expand the infrastructure, how are they getting connected to an internet service?
That would be the last mile section that the congressman had spoken about earlier.
Okay.
There was a question about B money and that type of thing, that would be the last mile connection.
Okay. Is there like, what would be the subscription charge for somebody who's taking part in this program to have internet service in their home?
This is not providing internet service at all, it's a middle mile network.
Okay, yeah, that's why I'm trying to like learn what this is so I know how to vote on it. But okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Sean Jenkins, Shauna, Sean, Sean.
Shauna.
Sorry.
Sorry, I got bad hand already. Sean Jenkins, uh, no interest, he's violent math teacher. And I would disagree with a couple of statements some people had because I'm good at math. It's not thirty percent of your money that you have to pay for, it's a hundred percent because seventy percent from the government is still my taxes. Okay, so that, that's the first thing I'd like to correct. Is it's a hundred percent, but on top of that, and I'm not sure they're a thing, but you know, I, I go to Home Depot and I buy stuff and within a month, what I just bought costs me more. So, the proposed budget that you gave us, my first question is, are you accounting for prices two years from now when we're building? Or are they today's prices? And what guarantee can you give me that those are twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five prices?
First, let me address the hundred percent too, because I think that's about the point that you made. However, as the congressman had said, if this were to, if this board decides not to take it, that money's going to someone else, it's federal money, it's federal taxes you're still paying for. So it's the thirty percent is the county money you're talking about. The um, I'm sorry, the second question was...
What guarantee, what, the prices that you showed us, is that twenty twenty-three current prices? Because on your timeline, I don't think you start putting the infrastructure until sometime in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, which means whatever the cost is now is certainly going up. I mean, I go to Home Depot and the prices change in a month, a month and a half.
No, you're correct, so, so the way that the projections were put together was that, if you recall, there was a, a typical cost of these in current prices, eighty-five thousand dollars a mile. Not knowing, and at the time, this was about a year ago. So the application was submitted in September of last year, so approximately a year ago. At that time, more so than now, but there's still an issue with price increases, inflation, everything else, labor costs, the whole nine yards. Uh, and there's still no specific knowledge of what it's going to be two years from now, and I agree with you on that, but that's why... and I agree with doing that. But that's why the costs were then at a hundred and ten thousand dollars a mile. There was a question earlier about the one thirty-six and one ten when you add them up. One ten is a subset of the one thirty-six. The one thirty-six is the all-in cost, which included in-kind match and everything else. That's the way that N.T.I.A. had asked to put it together. So if you take the one ten and you compare that to the eighty-five thousand, that's what, thirty, forty? I'm not doing the math right. But it's, it's, it's a fair amount of money, more, twenty-five thousand dollars more on average per mile than what the current costs are to build these networks. So that was built in specifically to allow some protection for the, any, any cost increases that are currently going on because of inflationary issues and other things that are going on.
Thank you. And so, a, a, as a math teacher, I, I teach calculus, and kids read like the first sentence of a problem, and they think it's easy. And then when they get all the information, they find out the problem's way more challenging. And I'm not sure how, if there was or wasn't a feasibility study, and obviously, if there was one in the past, they didn't go through with it. And if there's one, time to do one now, I'm not sure how you could in good conscience ask taxpayers, hey, we don't know if we can sell what we need to sell for these dark fibers. We don't know a hundred percent whether it's really going to cost what we think it is, yet we want you to trust us with your money. And from what I can see as a math person, there's been about one or two people who may or may not be all the way informed, but kind of supported, and everybody else was against it. And to me, they're the voters. And I don't see a substantial amount of voters saying, we really want this. I see most of the people saying, we don't want this. And so that, that's going to be something that you should also consider because I know if this goes in and if it goes over budget, that I won't vote for a single one of you. And I know multiple people who will be in the same boat. Okay? It, it's, we hired you to do a job, and I don't think, without a feasibility study, you're doing your job well because you, you should not be spending money. And I mean, I, I have family members who have been in sales, and you don't even know if you can sell the product you have. And so if you don't know you can sell the product you have, how can you ask us to float your idea without having true knowledge saying, hey, look, we have commitment from twenty companies, and we have projected ten more companies, so we're almost to the quota we need to be successful, then maybe I could go with it. Like, okay, they're ninety percent of the way there. That, that's not a big jump for us. You're zero percent of the way there of what we need for that to happen. And I, I just, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. You could correct me on that. Mr. Jenkins, anything further, sir?
No, I think we're good, I guess.
Thank you. Robert Vertoli. Robert Vertoli. Jonathan Pace.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jonathan Pace. I'm a resident of Millville. And how you can just call me John will be fine. Thanks. So first of all, let me say...
No interest, no interest in there?
No interest at all. But I'm definitely interested in speaking my view. That's all. First of all, commend Jeff and the team that put this through down in D.C. Lot of effort, lot of energy, lot of interest, right? So I, I can see that as a driver and a benefit for our area. We need some increased technology and other things to happen in South Jersey, so I can appreciate all that. So thanks to him. Appreciate his time. Dominic, thanks for your presentation. A little background for me, right? So you understand my perspective. I've been in the nuclear power business for twenty years, including time in the military, and my last decade and a half was as a project manager. So I have a great understanding of what Dominic went through with his presentation and the process of developing projects from their infancy all the way through. So I'm just going to share some highlights. And Doug, I brought a red pen up here, right? So the red pen means something's not right, right, in my business. So time pressure, right off the bat. If you guys are under time pressure, don't accept it. Time pressure is a risk that we don't need to take. Now, I'm in a conservative business, or should I say, I was. I'm now retired, so I'm in a great place. But when I was a project manager in the business and the utility, pressure was not going to work. It got the red pen. Feasibility study. Too much discussion about a feasibility study that wasn't complete, wasn't, wasn't finished, wasn't tangible, wasn't evidence. And, and a feasibility study is everything to understand the conception of the roadmap for where you're going with a project. You've got to have it, right? There's too many variables here. So I said unsat red pen. Precedents and examples. Do we have precedents and examples of other places in the country that meet the same demographics and statistics that we have? I didn't hear it. So for me, I don't have any precedence to even begin to trust this. Coupled with the feasibility study and time pressure, there's three bell ringers right there to tell me no way. Stakeholder register. Dominic, and I'm not picking on you, but just if you're a project manager and you're intel into that, you know stakeholder registers are critical in identifying the people that are invested in the project through the whole process, right? And when you had talked about that, not being able to define some of the stakeholders, or you used a different term, I think it was, that made me uneasy, right? These are stakeholders. This room is filled with stakeholders. We're all stakeholders, right? So not really having that clearly defined made me uneasy. How about lack of oversight, right? What's the oversight of really making sure that this project as a utility base or similar to a utility-based project is going to be managed and, and executed properly? Not only the financial side, but from the ground, the environment, and all the other elements that come place with that, right? So very, very important. And then the project lifecycle at twenty years. I did digital. I've done digital work for forty years in some of the highest ends of the industry, right, with the nuclear power generation. I, I definitely understand it. I understand some of this technology. Twenty years for life expectancy of some of these components, that might be pushing. So to the commissioners, I'm just going to share in closing. And to the body of the people in the audience and to all the county people, my experience says red pen doesn't get the vote. That's it. That's all I have to offer for everybody. Thanks for your time. Push it.
I.R. Carmen. Or J.R. Carmen.
J.R. Carmen, and I have no interest in any ISP provider. As a cyber network security professional, I have a perspective on the M.M.G. program that presents more than meets the unacquainted eye. Broadband and fiber technologies are dynamic and in a constant state of change from being antiquated one moment to cutting-edge and contemporary the next. Costs associated with evolutions in technology may not be appropriately considered by those in favor of government-owned networks. Deficiencies in the M.M.G. program application proposed by the C.C.I.A. by Triad Associates for Cumberland and Salem Counties include providing a redundant broadband infrastructure that already exists in both counties. The M.M.G. does not provide the most important and essential task in access to internet, which is known as the last mile that provides internet connectivity to each end user. C.C.I.A. has no experience in overseeing public broadband infrastructure. Former Director Darlene Barber indicated in the certification of operational capability, quote, "I certify that the county has never operated a middle-mile broadband network," unquote. The C.C.I.A.'s application does not identify costs inevitably associated with compulsory cyber and network security, infrastructure, and software application. VCOM, the engineering firm involved with the design of the M.M.G. programs, expertise lies in cellular, cellular and wireless rather than broadband and fiber constructed infrastructures. The application states the goal is to provide access for undeserved populations, or underserved, rather. But the application uses the ambitious benchmark of a hundred, one hundred megabytes per second download speeds and twenty megabytes upload speeds as the definition of, quote, "underserved." Considering that example, Netflix, which I do not watch, recommends just twenty-five MPS to stream 4K content, and some would argue the one hundred slash twenty benchmark is overzealous at the point. Using those criteria certainly creates many more underserved areas eligible for tax dollars for new broadband infrastructure. According to Taxpayers Protection Alliance' report, failed promise of government-owned network across America that's GONs, there is no disputing the importance of internet connectivity in the 21st century economy. The question is whether the private sector should continue taking the lead in funding and facilitating the deployment of broadband, or whether taxpayers should create and fund slash subsidize government-owned networks to do so. Supporters of taxpayer-funded broadband systems claim that governments, that is taxpayers, are needed to build these systems because the private sector simply will not. Truth is that the broadband providers have spent more than one point six trillion dollars since nineteen ninety-six to build, upgrade, and maintain networks, resulting in a seventy-one percent growth of rural broadband. Internet infrastructure is in place to serve ninety-eight percent of the nation, primarily built by telecom companies. T.P.A. also created a database of thirty GONs in eighteen states and has detailed information on the myriad of deficiencies associated with GONs. In each M.M.G. program, despite the unfortunate habit of policymakers ignoring the financial and viability problems posed by GONs, these taxpayer-funded networks may be soon antiquated. Thanks to the ever-changing technological landscape, as the United States continues to deploy the five G wireless services and cable companies lay more fiber that will bring faster service to customers without taxpayer subsidization, local officials may soon realize that GONs are an unnecessary and inefficient use of households' hard-earned dollars.
Mr. Carmen, we need to close.
Let me finish, please. You extend time to the other participants. Kindly grant me the same, Curtis. Thank you. The most recent T.P.A. report, subsidy programs designed to connect underserved communities have shown little regard for both existing competitive pressures in the market and incentives for private operators to invest in expanding and upgrading existing networks. In conclusion, governmental grants directed towards helping more local and strategically targeted townships, municipalities, or cities like Vineland should enable last-mile connectivity without burdening all of the county's taxpayers. A model would be the federal grant given my home in Hopewell Township, helping provide companies, private companies, to complete middle-mile infrastructure in areas that genuinely need infrastructure rather than funding a redundant broadband infrastructure that already exists in most of Cumberland and Salem Counties, constructed and managed by an inexperienced public entity like the C.C.I.A. Incentivize and enable middle-mile availability where it is genuinely needed and appropriate monies in last-mile installation with broadband equity access and deployment B program. Further consideration should be given state legislative action incentivizing commercial investment like Senator Michael Testa's proposal with E.D.A. loans rather than taxpayer subsidies with S. fourteen fifty-eight, July of twenty twenty. Historically, governmentally-owned market businesses do not fare nearly as well as private enterprises in providing goods and services at affordable cost and sustained value. Ultimately, it was not our founders' intent for government to be in business and to compete with private enterprise, but rather efficiently regulate free markets justly and equitably. In the end, I hope the board will exercise prudence for the M.M.G. program. Vote and remember, quote, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest," unquote. Dr. Benjamin Franklin. Thank you.
There will be another meeting tomorrow night at the Salem County Courthouse in regard to this project at five thirty. You are all welcome to attend. The commissioners of Salem and Cumberland County, thank you for being here this evening. Commissioners, anything further at this time? We'll close the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Meeting. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Cumberland, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Salem, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.